All right. I call to order the Gladstone City Council's special meeting for August 2nd, 2017 at 6:30 PM. Tonight, we're here for the public hearing to address the appeal of Z-0236-17-D, a 52-unit apartment development at 1180 Beatrice Avenue, located at Beatrice and Abernathy Lane. The applicant is Mr. Casey Cutting. Being that this is a special meeting, the business will be limited, business from the audience will be limited to proponent and opponent testimony relating to the appeal. If you could please fill out yellow cards and put your address on them, that way we have it for future notices. And also, when you come up to speak, you don't need to give us your address, just give us your city. That should be fine. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Milch?
Here.
Counselor Neese?
Here.
Counselor Tracy?
Present.
Counselor Reisner?
Here.
Counselor McMahon?
Here.
Counselor Mercero?
Here.
Mayor Stimple?
Here.
Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
At the Pledge of Allegiance, through the pride of the United States of America, and through the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. If you guys have problems hearing us, just kind of raise your hand and let us know, because we kind of have a tendency to sit back and not sit forward to the microphone. Okay, so as always, my goal is to keep these meetings respectful, engaging, and on task, and I hope that you all will help me do that. And thank you again for coming and participating in this process. So we'll start with the staff report. Do you want to do the staff?
No.
Oh, the, okay, go ahead and...
You want me to...
Go, David.
Okay. So I'm going to read a script that has to accompany every land use hearing like this, so if you'll indulge, if you'll indulge me. The public hearing is now open for the purpose of considering an appeal of file number Z-0236-17-D. The application on appeal is for a 52-unit apartment building on Beatrice Avenue. There's a procedure that we'll follow tonight. First, we'll start with the staff report, as the mayor indicated. Then we'll take applicant testimony. Then we'll hear proponent testimony, those that are in favor of the application. We will hear opponent testimony, those that are opposed. Applicant rebuttal, we'll follow that, if any. The council, at that point, will close the hearing, and then they would proceed to a discussion and decision. We have suggested time limits for tonight, given the number of people that are here, and what we've come up with is that the applicant would have 20 minutes to present the application. That would include time for the applicant's rebuttal as well at the end. Organized groups that are in favor of or opposed to the application will have 15 minutes total. And then individuals in favor of or opposed to the application will have three minutes each. Members of the public, as the mayor indicated, should fill out a card if they wish to testify and give that card to the city recorder. And just a little follow-up on the address issue. No problem at all not stating your address at the microphone. I can understand people's increasing in the stay-at-age reluctance to do that. But if you want to have notice of what happens here or next steps, we need to have an address so we can mail that to you. So please make sure that that address gets on the, on the card, or otherwise gets to the city. Now I'll go through some housekeeping matters for the council. Does any council member wish to disqualify him or herself based on any financial interest or any bias in this matter?
I do.
Okay, Mayor? Can you give a sense of what that, either the financial interest or the bias is?
Oh, no financial interest. Bias, I have been helping the Abernathy group with the planning process, because very few people actually know how that works. And I've also been consulting with them on jurisdictional requirements for wetland delineations and connecting them with the agencies to help give them some supportive information. So I will need to recuse myself. Sorry, folks. And Council President Lyndon Neese will handle the rest of the meeting.
Thank you.
And I'd like to say also, if you look on page 79 of the testimony or the evidence that we received tonight, you'll find the name of myself and my wife on a list that's headed, adult names of those who are in opposition to file, and so on. I'm not sure if, how my name got on there exactly, except that the fact that I did attend an informational meeting in the area. I live near, near the proposed development. And in order to become familiar with what was going on, I attended that meeting. I made a couple of comments more related to procedural issues, but not necessarily pro and con about the development itself. I feel at this time that I'm able to be impartial in, in looking at this issue tonight. I kind of, I see it kind of like if you read about a case in the newspaper, see it on television, get called to jury duty, it's still possible to render an impartial decision. And that's the position that I hold tonight.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for raising that. Is there any other counselor that would wish to declare any financial interest or any bias? Okay. Counselor Neese, do you want to continue the script, or would you like me to? It's up to you.
Do we need to take a roll call on those for, that have no financial interest or bias in this?
No, just had to make sure it's part of the record.
Okay. Does any council member wish to report ex parte pre-hearing contacts, including any site visits?
Well, me, you might be faster at it, Neil, I have to dig through my...
Well, then, while you're digging...
Does Tammy call back? Does she ask each individual counselor if they've done a site visit?
Yes, that's appropriate.
Why don't you go ahead, Tammy? Counselor Milch?
I attended a meeting that was held in the cul-de-sac on Abernathy Court. That's as close as I got to the actual site. I did not, some people there walked into the little clearing there that leads, as I understand, it leads to the site, but I did not do that. So I've not done a site visit.
Okay. Counselor Tracy?
7:27, I met Citizen Lynda Rothie in her front yard, discussed my trying to locate the perimeter of the Cutting property from the south side of the property. 7:28, I received a phone call from Brian Early introducing himself. I think the inquiry was whether or not I was going to visit the site. I said I was most likely going to try to visit the property. 7:29, I met Merle and Terry Ross at their garage sale. I asked again to clarify another property boundary to the west of the site, or, I'm sorry, to the east of the site. That was pretty much the extent of that conversation. 7:30, I visited the Cutting property. I met Sean Kent as I was walking through the gate. I just asked about the Abernathy Gate interests and whether or not that was with or to the property. I visited the property again yesterday, walked the property, and then went down to the Olson Wetland and walked up from the Olson Wetland to the property, and that's my, the extent of my contact.
Thank you.
Counselor Reisner?
Last weekend, I not only visited the property, but I also walked through the property. Also, a couple of weeks ago, I received an email asking that I sign a petition, but I replied that I wasn't able to do that, because the matter might become before us and had, in that reply, CC'd Jackie Betts and our attorney. Also, over the weekend, somebody dropped off a flyer regarding this matter, that, I saw the heading, sorry, folks, but it went right into recycling, and, but, you know, sure your heart was in the right place. So I'm assuming everybody in the neighborhood got one. And I think there might have been an article in today's Clackamas Review or in the op-ed section, but I just saw the heading and thought it might be associated with this, so I didn't read it.
Thank you.
That's my...
Yeah, and that's a good point that Counselor Reisner makes. People often forget, because it doesn't seem obvious, but even reading a newspaper article can be an ex parte.
I too read the Clackamas, or glanced through it. I think it was just a copy of another article in here, so I didn't read it very much. And I spent probably a half hour, 45 minutes last night, wandered through the gates, and had a couple of blackberries, they're very good right now.
They are.
Wandered all the way down to the wetlands, took a look around there, had my phone out, so I was able to Google locate where I was most of the time and, and kind of keep an idea of where I thought property lines were. So I did not talk to anybody, nobody came out to see me or anything, and that's been my extent.
Counselor Mercero?
I went down there two days ago, off of Abernathy Lane. There was three axes that I took. One was next to Abernathy Court. And the property's beautiful down that way. It's kind of dark, and I didn't want to wander through people's yards and get shot, so I didn't do that. I also went down, I also G-map the wetlands and got directions down there, off of Windsor Court, I believe it is, and took a gander at that. Can't really see a heck of a lot, but I went down there. I did also, at the end of Abernathy Court, furthest from Abernathy, I walked through the gate and walked down on the property and took a gander at that. I didn't go to the edge of the wetlands, because I wasn't sure where they were, and I didn't want to fall in.
They're dry right now.
Oh, that's good.
That's my report.
Counselor Neese?
Yes, I did do a site visit, and I spent about 45 minutes there. And I did knock on a door of one of the neighbors to make sure I was in the right location, and he directed me and told me that's where I needed to go. So I, and I also went down Windsor Court to kind of see on the backside of where everything is and what's going on there. So that was, that's my extent.
All right. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the right of any council member to hear this Speaking nun? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the council to hear this Oregon land use laws require that all issues be raised if the issues are to be appealed. Failure to raise the issues at this hearing may invalidate or further appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals of Luba. If the application is inconsistent with the city's comprehensive plan and land use regulations, Oregon law permits the applicant to offer an amendment or purpose, a condition of approval to bring the application into conformance with the plan and regulations. The applicant's failure to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specify, to allow the council to respond to the issues, will preclude any action for damages in Circuit Court. If you, if you are going to testify, please address the applicable criteria. Will the staff please do the report?
Thank you.
Can I interject just real quickly?
Yes.
I would like to get a point of clarification. So one of the things that has made this process so smooth, and it's not something that we do in Gladstone all the time, is that we have a very well organized prepared group here this evening, that I know we stipulated that the opponent testimony organized group would get 15 minutes.
Yes.
They do have eight people here, and they're requesting to speak for 34 minutes. So it's roughly about four minutes apiece, if you do the math. So I wanted to make sure, since they have a certain order that they want to present tonight, that the council and staff is comfortable and the applicant with, with giving them the 34 minutes to do their presentation.
I have no issue with that. Any councilmen have an issue with that?
Does the applicant? Is the applicant here, first of all, I guess? I assume so.
Here.
Do you mind if they speak a little longer?
Well, I suppose that's fine, I just, you know, it could be a long night.
They have 34 minutes here for eight people, and, like I said, we could just tell them they're not organized, and they could speak individually as well, and we're, because we're going to allow anybody to speak tonight that wants to do that.
And I would suggest maybe just in, in exchange, giving the applicant some flexibility on time as well.
Okay.
The key thing here with time limits is not to, you know, hasten anything. It's more a matter of, I think a lot of people realize what the issues are with this application, and to sort of discourage redundancy and keep it moving in that regard. So, you know, it's completely the council's call, but I think maybe just flexibility all around is the way to go.
And each individual person will come up and speak?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right. And Tammy, will you monitor the time? Okay. All right. Who is coming up first?
My backup?
Oh.
How about a staff report? All right, so I'm going to be as brief as I can. I know there's a lot of people took time out of their evening to be here and want to talk, but this is a de novo hearing. It's, we're basically starting from scratch, and I do need to go through process here. So bear with me while I summarize the staff report for the proposal that everybody already knows about. So this property is west of Beatrice, south of Abernathy Lane, it's about an acre and a half in size. Proposal is for multifamily. It's morphed a little through the process, but it's a 52-unit apartment complex. Planning Commission held two public hearings on this on dates May 16th and June 20th, ultimately coming up with a decision of approval that was then timely appealed, and that's why we're here tonight. So, the council got probably a really thick packet of information. What we tried to do is give you everything in the record, I mean, everything, from, from the application itself, staff report, minutes. We've received a lot of information from, from citizens. There were still emails coming to my email when I left to come here, those I didn't get. So hopefully, you're going to be able to talk tonight and, and submit that. But basically, what we've got here is a piece of ground, acre and a half in size, zoned MR, multifamily residential. This proposal is for multi-residential. Through the original pre-application process with, with the applicant, we, we had to work with the original plan, because the MR zone in Gladstone has a minimum density, and, as well as a maximum. And so he had to increase the number of units over what he'd originally wanted. What we have in front of you now, and as it was amended through the Planning Commission, meets the dimensional standards as far as number of units, setbacks, heights, that sort of thing. There were also some changes to site layout generally and, and building facades, but I'll let the applicant talk about that. Your code, I just went through all the, all the applicable code criteria that apply and made findings against each, and I could do that again here, but what I'm going to do instead is hope that each of you read through this, the decision particularly, and are aware of, of the findings that the Planning Commission came up with, as well as staff in the staff report. As far as significant issues on this, the wetland, obviously, is, is significant. There's also, were concerns, several, many, during the Planning Commission process regarding other impacts, such as traffic, noise, that kind of thing, which I hope we have a chance to talk about in some detail here tonight. With that, I, I told you I was going to be brief, and I'm just leaping through this, and again, hoping you all had a chance to look at it. I will point out one other thing. When it comes to a land use application in a city, we have 120 days to process it locally, and that has to include any appeal. In this case, there was a, we're kind of busy at the Planning Commission, so it took a while to get to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission continued the hearing once. It took a while for the appellant to actually appeal it, so we are kind of up against the clock, and in fact, the 120-day clock expires on August 16th. For whatever that's worth, this is easily the closest I've gotten to the time limit. So we need to keep that in mind when considering, frankly, you don't have time to continue this. How's that? It's just, you know, unless you do it for a week or something like that. So just bear that in mind, so let's see if we can get this hashed out this evening. And with that, I'm open for questions, otherwise I'll just sit here quietly.
So I, for David, I think, when, so we got some new information today or yesterday from like DSL. When, when will we be able to discuss that or bring that up, or?
Yeah, so, I mean, I think maybe, maybe just briefly talk about that now. I think that's as good a time as any, because as Clay said, the, the wetland issue and then an associated habitat issue, wetland issue, I think primarily is a, something that is sort of front and center with tonight's appeal. So between the, the Planning Commission's decision and tonight, there has been new testimony, new evidence submitted, which is perfectly fine. As Clay said, this is a, a new hearing for all intents and purposes. It's not limited to the record that was developed below at the Planning Commission. DSL provided testimony in the form of an email to Clay, and it says basically that they've reviewed the property soils, various maps that are there, and they've attached some figures to that as well. And what they say is that the review, historical aerials show some wetland signatures on the parcel. Based on a review of this information, it's likely that there are wetlands on the parcel, and that they recommend the property owner have the property evaluated. So a couple of things there. And I know there's been a number of, this has been, this was a topic of discussion even at the Planning Commission. Two, I look at it as two, two separate issues, but they're very related. The first issue is that DSL, a variety of state agencies, even federal agencies, are going to have regulations with respect to waters of the state, waters of the country. If it goes that far, waters of the US, then the feds would get involved. Those aren't regulations that cities apply, just as the state doesn't apply your land use regulations. Separate levels of government, they have their own standards, and, doesn't mean they don't have to be met, of course they do. But it, it does mean, what authority does a city have to apply, you know, a federal water quality standard, or in this case, a state wetland standard? And vice versa. There really isn't any authority for the, for the state to be applying your standards. So in a, in a sort of abstract way, when we see development that comes in, and there may be a, a reason to have a state permit, whether it's a DSL permit for wetlands, any other type of state or federal permit, what is most often, if not exclusively done, is you say to the applicant, okay, well, we recognize that there is that standard out there, and that Agency X is responsible for enforcing it. We will, if the application is approved, otherwise found to be consistent with the local standards, add a condition that would say, you must go and get, in this case, let's just say DSL approval, and, and provide that to us before you break ground. That's a very common, typical condition that would be placed on a variety of land use applications. So that's, that's sort of issue number one, and that was kind of what we were looking at, at least from my point of view at the Planning Commission, that there might have been a DSL jurisdictional wetland there that they would regulate. But in my practice, in my experience, cities aren't usually going so far as to say, oh, you have to work all that out before you can get a, a land use approval. It's sort of separate standards. And as I said, most often, the city would just condition getting that permit from DSL. The DSL testimony, though, that came in after the decision was made, is a little bit different and does implicate a local standard. If you take a look at, it's chapter 17, 27 of your code, it's the Water Quality Resource Area. And it seeks part of a metro requirement, that all cities in metro have standards that, that regulate and seek to control development within water quality areas. There is a provision in it, of course, I'm struggling to find it now, ah, here it is. It's under the applicability section, 1727020, and specifically, it is subsection 5B, so 0205B, that I think is, is pertinent here, and does affect this application, in my view. You know, that's ultimately a question for the council. But what it says is, "If, in the course of development review, evidence suggests that a property may contain a water quality resource area, the provisions of this chapter shall be applied to that development review." Additionally, the standards of GMC Section 1727080, MAP administration shall be applied, and if the standards are met, the district boundary shall be amended." So it's, it's really that first sentence there, that I think the council's going to have to sort of grapple with, because I think, as we all know, right now, there is no, you know, application of that chapter to this, to this application. It just doesn't exist, because at the time, there wasn't a belief from the planning side that, that there was a, a reason to apply the chapter. DSL letter doesn't say that there definitely is a wetland, but it, in my view, it certainly is evidence that suggests there may be. And that's something that our code says, well, if that's the case, then there's got to be a review of that done. So that'll be something that the council will need to sort of consider. But to me, if the council feels that, yes, that's, that is applicable, and we don't have that information, then there's really one of two options. One is a denial, because you haven't, don't have evidence that shows that chapter is satisfied. The other option would be to allow, and this is something that Oregon law, that we talked about in the script, says is the applicant's ability to do this, would be to say to the applicant, okay, well, you know, we've got 120-day clock here, we can't, we can't violate that. But if the applicant wanted to go back and do that study and determine whether, in fact, there is a water quality resource area there, a wetland, that would be regulated by that chapter, I think that that's, that's something that the applicant can do. And what would happen then is the, the 120-day clock would be tolled, so we wouldn't have that, that threat of violating the time limitation. Does that summarize it in a way that makes sense?
And so it allows the, the builder, if we, it stops the 120-day clock for both the city and the builders, is that correct? So then he can then do that?
Yeah, the 120-day clock is, is meant for the protection of the applicant, so they get a timely decision on applications. And so they also have the right to, to toll it, to say, I'm, I will, I will, you know...
Extend it a little bit or something?
Exactly.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And I'm hoping I'm allowed to ask this, but why didn't this come up before Planning Commission? Why, why, this DSL and this report now is giving to us tonight, and where, how did it get missed through planning?
The, I think it's MAP 12, I can't remember if you're comprehensive plan, and I've got a copy of it, I can show you if you'd like. That was the evidence we used, planning staff used, to present to the Planning Commission, which shows this wetland. It shows the buffer, neither on the subject property. It shows the Title 13, which is the Habitat Conservation Area Blob Boundary, also, also not on this property. Typically, what happens when I take in any application anywhere, I send notice to DSL, just to let them know. It's an online form, fill, you just fill it, click it, usually I don't hear back. I'm assuming I did this on this one, but regardless, I didn't hear back. This came up at both, at both public hearings, before the Planning Commission certainly, because there's obviously a wetland on the property adjacent. Whether or not it extends onto this existing, based on the information we had at the time to work with, it did not show that it extended onto the subject property. So we were using the, the information we had available at the time. We got late information or comments from DSL. Typically, what DSL will say in their comments is, there may be wetlands, and we suggest you, you know, let the applicant know this, and that we may be requiring a wetlands delineation. This one's stronger. I mean, this, I don't know, I don't recognize the name, but it says, what does it say? It says there's likely, likely wetlands or something, you know, pretty, pretty strong. So that's, that's, you know, definitely evidence that, that gets you into the applicability of 17.27, which David just, just talked about. It's just, this is new information that we didn't have at the Planning Commission level.
No, go ahead.
So from the information in, in the packet, the, the mapping that you were talking about was done, what, in '02 or '09? I wasn't really, I can't remember.
I think it was '05.
Or '05. So we're talking, you know, 12 years ago. So do wetlands, can they expand or, or shrink over time?
Well, wetlands are, although in this case, I'm not... Well, wetlands are, although in this case, I'm not sure this is a natural wetland, but once they become a wetland, they are a natural feature, and they, and they do this. And it just depends on mostly what's going on upstream, more than anything. But yes, they can, they can vary in size. Now, if we get a delineation on this property, let's just say the delineation, it could just as easily show the wetland area being smaller than it's in its map. Could be bigger, could be shaped different, could take in other area properties. There's, we don't really know what's going to go on until we get someone qualified, and there are qualified people out there to do this, I'm not sure what they're called, but wetlands biologists or something, the state registers them. And until we get that, we do not know exactly where the boundary of this wetland is.
I think this delineation issue was, was one of the things that the opponents of the project raised and articulated rather clearly. What's not clear to me is whether the, the location of the wetlands, whether it's determined to be actually on the subject property, or whether the size of the wetlands on adjacent property has changed enough that, for example, the buffer zone that's required between the wetland, the delineated wetlands, and the property may overlap to an extent that that would also impact the decision. Can you shed a little light on that?
Well, I can show you your comprehensive plan map, the map 12, I've got it right here. If you want me to bring it up there, it's big. But I can just show you what it looks like on that map. But basically, no, it is not on the subject property, neither the wetland nor the mapped buffer. But these are mapped features. So, the, your mapping does not show any wetland or wetland buffer on this property.
But since that map has been made, it could have changed, correct?
Or the map could have been incorrect to begin with.
One thing it states in the reports, that there is a requirement, no matter where the wetland is, that it has a 100-foot buffer between it and whatever subject property you've got, and you're working with, of which the buffer has to have overstoried trees, basically, and understoried vegetation. Now, from this latest information received, that if the wetland is on a portion of the property, no matter how much it is, that just makes it a little bit more drastic, in that there's got to be 100 feet, my understanding, it's got to be 100 feet past that. Is that correct?
There's, there's two issues in play here, and they're both from Metro's functional plan. It's from Chapter 3 and Chapter 13, or Title 3 and Title 13. Title 3 is the wetland, it's, it's actually called Clean Water, but it deals with wetlands. Title 13 is Nature and Neighborhoods. It's, it's the habitat. The habitat, and correct me if I'm wrong, because this, the metro plan is very difficult, frankly, to, to read. The Habitat Conservation Area, which is a different mapped area, it is associated with this wetland, but the boundaries are not the same. There is a 100-foot distance from that mapped boundary, in which if you've got a property that's in for development, in this case, this is development, within 100 feet of that off-site boundary, then it does kick in some requirements, particularly a map verification.
So, there's two separate standards. Dealing with two separate issues, but they're, again, they're really related, closely related in terms of, there's a, two separate, one has to do with water quality, one has to do with habitat. And the boundaries of those areas on the map that Clay described are not the same. They're different. But what you're referring to, Councilor Mercero, is the, is the habitat piece that says, Metro's code says, your code says, if a property is within 100 feet of that boundary for habitat, then there's additional studies that have to be done. And I think that's an open question, as to whether staff found that it wasn't within 100 feet, therefore not applicable. Others feel differently. And that's, again, a piece of evidence that you'd have to determine, is or isn't it?
One thing you haven't mentioned, Councilor, at least I didn't hear it.
The, if the council denies this for whatever reason, it will then go to Luba, and there will be a cost to the city of some amount.
Can I go through these real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is the mapped wetland boundary. This is the subject property rectangle, and since then, we've configured to be a single piece. This is the subject property. The middle blob is the wetland. The ring around it is the buffer, neither of which are mapped on this property here.
And that, what year was that map done? Or isn't it? Okay, just curious.
And this one is even less useful. This is the Habitat Conservation Area. If you overlay it, you'll find that this blob is north and west, it's not centered on the wetland. It's north and west, not the wetland.
So, I think Councilor Mercero was, I didn't get the end of his question, but I just want to make sure I answered it. It can be appealed to Luba, yes. It isn't automatic, it doesn't automatically go to Luba, it has to, someone would have to appeal it.
Right. But the city would be forced to pay, most likely, for the appeal, basically?
If you cho, you don't, there's no legal obligation to defend it, let me make sure I say that. You aren't, no one can force you to go and defend the decision either way. And there are times where cities just simply, they'll have an appeal, and they, they don't appear, basically. I'm not suggesting that's a good idea, I'm just, that is an option. I didn't want anybody to say, "Oh, yeah, you told them that they had to, you know, defend it." No, you don't. You don't, you don't have to defend it. Cities typically do. And were you going to ask about costs? I mean, it's really hard to predict what that is.
Cost is one.
Yeah, you know, our office does a lot of Luba appeals, just because we represent a lot of jurisdictions that get appeals, and I think it's pretty typical that an appeal runs, you know, the $15,000 range. There, you know, it's a lot of, lot of writing, a lot of briefing, so.
But if Luba decides that they don't want to take a stand on this, they can turn around and send it back to us, is that correct?
Well, they, if you...
Depending on what the codes and what, how they feel about that, is that not right?
They'd always, yeah, they wouldn't just say, "No, we're not going to consider it."
Right, no, I'm not saying that.
They would have a full, you know, you'd go to oral argument down in Salem, and you'd have the whole thing, and then they'd render a decision. And one of those things could be a remand back to the city council, correct?
Okay.
Another one could be affirming it, saying, "Nope, the city, you know, the decision was okay."
Okay. Councilor Tracy?
So, I'm a little lost here, because to me, it seems like if you were to go out there with a wetland specialist or a wetland scientist, which is what they're called, you're going to immediately come across some of the wetland indicators on the parcel we're speaking of, on the cutting property, right away, including equatedium, which is a wetland grass that's basically listed not only on the State of Oregon's wetland plan identifier list, but also on the National Wetlands Plan Identifier List. There's also thrushes and sedges, and potential for hydroric soils, which is obvious by the Wapatoa soils map, shows predominantly hydroric across the bottom half of the property. So, I'm kind of at a loss as to why that wasn't performed right out of the gate, considering the close proximity to the Olson wetland, the fact that wetlands are dynamic, and they don't really know property bounds. I've had this experience before on my own development, and learned the hard way that a wetland existed in the middle of a rock outcropping on a development piece that I had. So, the fact that a wetland specialist never walked the property, or there was never a conclusionary report based on a specialist or a scientist on the property, leaves me to believe that we kind of came out of the gate pretty fast through the planning process, without performing the due diligence on whether or not there was an impact to the HCAD or the HCA there. And I'm not, I'm struggling with trying to understand that, because this is obviously a considerable commitment on the developer's part, and I certainly would want to take this risk myself, so. You know, going back to your point, though, it sounds to me like it's not baked yet, before it should, you know, before it went to planning review. The whole package wasn't baked because of the proximity to the, what we know is a wetland.
Well, I, you know, I talked to, Clay's, would have to weigh in on what was happening while the application was going through, I, you know, I wasn't privy to that, I don't, you know, we don't work together on a daily basis. I think that, you know, there's a lot of things that come through, and a lot of times, and I'll let Clay speak for himself on this, I don't mean to put words in his mouth, but you do tend to look at, "Okay, what does the map say?"
Sure.
Right? And, you know, it's, it's a, it's a time issue, if nothing else. But the reality is, I don't, you know, it could be a completeness issue. At the very least, at this point, you have evidence, like I said, that came in very recently, that would suggest, as you're pointing out, maybe there is a wetland here.
Well, one of the things I read in the DSL email was, they were, I think they were inferring that, that according to the aerial photos, it looked like there had been perched water on the property. And that's, again, another indicator. So, we have this kind of trail of indicators prior to the Planning Commission ruling on this property, but everything about the wetland is missed, or it's not missed, it's talked about. And some of the folks on Planning Commission brought it up a number of times, but they were assured there were no wetlands on the property. The assurance there's no wetlands on the property with a wetland specialist's report that says, "I didn't see any identifiers on the property," that, to me, is where we would be today. We don't have that. We just have somebody that says it's not on the map, and I'm concerned about that part of it, because I, sure, I did see the identifiers when I was out there. And I'm not a wetland specialist, I've just learned the identifiers the hard way. So, I just think that maybe coming back to the Gladstone Municipal Code feels like the prudent way of going forward, because then the burden of proof really is on the developer to assure us that we're not impacting the HCAD.
In retrospect, I really wish we would have had a wetlands delineation done. The evidence we had, the evidence we had, the maps, comprehensive plan maps, which is in 17.27020 sub 5, which is when you kick in the water quality section, is when it's mapped on, on, on map 12, it wasn't mapped there. I am not a wetland specialist, and I know that, and I could go out there and walk around and not know what I'm looking at. There was no evidence submitted during the Planning Commission process that rose to the level of indicating there was a wetland on this property. DSL was asked to comment on this and didn't. I'm a little concerned at their late comments. I don't know what it took to get them to comment, but my guess is it took quite a few people contacting them to actually comment on this. They're, they're the people who know wetlands and do wetlands. None of your maps showed this as a wetland or a habitat. Yes, it's on an adjoining property, but you can go east and get steep slope, too, and that's, that also doesn't apply on this property. So, I, again, I wish we would have done a wetlands delineation, but there just wasn't enough evidence to require it.
And let me ask you a question. Do you not check with Metro or go over the plans, you know, when you're getting your information and pertaining to the maps? I mean, wouldn't they send those to you? And you said you had contacted DSL, and, but it's, but they've never responded, and I would think there would be a follow-up to that, because to me, this is important.
DSL is the, is the agency with authority here. Metro, it's their functional plan, Title 3, that gives you 17.27, that gives you the local ability to require. Let's say the, let's say the application had come in on the wetlands property. We'd look at the map, oh, there's a wetlands, and immediately 17.27 would have, would have been kicked in as part of the application process. Barring that, the only time that DSL can get directly involved and implement their rules is when somebody applies for a grading permit, not a land use permit. It's, it's a grading, grading fill permit time. That's when DSL can actually say, "Do this, do this, do this." Right now, they, they cannot demand a delineation. They can suggest it, and the Planning Commission decision included that as a, as a condition, that DSL requirements be satisfied.
Okay.
I just honestly didn't think we had enough, at the time of Planning Commission, to, that would have allowed us to apply 17.27.
But the, I'm sorry, the developer could still develop by applying for a removal and fill permit, correct? I mean, there's possibility. Let's say there was a wetland on the bottom corner, and he needed to put the buffer zone in there, but also develop that portion, he would, he or she would be able to apply for a removal and fill permit, is that correct?
Yes, but, but that immediately would involve DSL, and that would risk the, you know, potential, at least the layout of the project, certainly.
Right. And then he would, he or she would also have to build, either build a compensatory wetland and monitor it, manage it for a period of time, or, or there's a number of...
Are you talking about mitigation?
Yeah.
Yeah, the Gladstone code is rather dull when it comes to mitigation.
Okay.
But Metro does have a regional bank, to where you could literally mitigate off-site.
By buying into the bank.
Mm-hmm.
Does, does the county have a wetland specialist in your department?
No.
Not at all? Okay.
John, uh...
Borg?
Runyon, all right.
Runyon, okay.
John Runyon had a report in there.
Speak into the mic.
And he seemed to leave me to believe that the wetland, and that specific wetland, was something he was concerned about, and how the land around it was treated, and that past development has, in fact, in my, the way I read it, has degraded the wetlands And he was cautioning, I believe, that we need to make sure that that wasn't going to happen. And with this further development, to me, it's become kind of a no-brainer, we need the report. I don't know if the other council goes with that.
So, not to cut off any discussion on this, because it's obviously, you know, the main sort of point here, I believe, but my recommendation would be, at this point, you still need to have the hearing. You need to provide people the opportunity, both the applicant, as well as folks that showed up, whatever side they might be on. I would suggest you, you hear from them, and then you'll be able to, eventually tonight, I think, come to that conclusion, if that's what the council believes is right.
Correct. All right.
One comment. Just to understand, the reason, part of the reason you're saying that is the wetlands issue is not the only issue raised by opponents of this. And to cut it off exclusively, that would prevent the ability to, for people to address traffic-related issues or other objections, or for the, for the developer to, to comment, you know, and to rebut those comments as well.
That certainly is true, but even just on a more fundamental level, we have an obligation to provide a process, that we need to, we need to do, the process being the hearing. So, whatever the issues might be, we still need to go, go through that process before we arrive at a conclusion.
Right.
And I have no regard towards being told what all the difficulties are, and I wanted to hear those anyway.
Yeah.
I just feel that this is a big issue.
Okay, now is the time for the applicant to have his presentation. Would you like to come forward, please? Hello.
My name is Casey, and I'm the applicant. And I don't know, did, did you all receive this binder? I was told that you did.
Yes.
I think it's in our packet.
Yeah, it is.
In the back part of this, yeah.
So, I'm just going to touch on a few things. The original application, during, during the Planning Commission meetings, there was a lot discussed about the fact that this is 50, 50 units, 50 apartment units. And this property, as Mr. Glasgow has stated, is, it's Zoned MR, multi-family residential, and there's a minimum and a maximum density. And over a period of, I've owned the property for three years, and over a period of three years, I've... years, I've gone to him with different scenarios at multiple times, trying to figure out a scenario where I didn't really have to hit that, that density. What I came up with is the minimum density that I'm required. The original application had some three-story buildings, and there was some objection, understandably so, but it's, it's hard to fit the amount of units that the property is zoned for on, on the property. And I, I was able to, through a lot of head scratching, come up with a two-story option with the, the minimum number of units that has a look similar to a single-family home. They're, they're all one, many properties are two- and three-bedroom units on the apartments, these are all one-bedroom or studios. And, and I'm, I'm trying to do the absolute minimum that I can do, I, I can't go any lower than that, as I, as was described to me, I, I have to hit the minimum. There's a minimum and a maximum, and I've, I've hit that minimum. I've tried to lessen the impact. The property, as I believe most of you've visited the site, it slopes away and downhill, so most of it is also going to be hidden. Because it's, it's two stories, there's, uh, going to be a slight grade change right at the property line, I'll have a four-foot retaining wall, so the, the upper units will actually be set down, so you'll only see the top unit and maybe a couple of feet off of the lower unit from backyards of the adjacent properties. From Beatrice Avenue, you, more than likely, maybe will be able to see just the, the peaks of the roof, but regardless, the whole point is, is being sloped away from the road and away from existing houses, there won't be a whole lot visible. The, um, one point about, I know traffic was brought up and, and, and the, the amount of traffic going in, these will be one-bedroom units, so there'll be a lessened amount of traffic based off of that. The, for example, the Webster Ridge apartment complex, I believe, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I was told that it's around a hundred and sixty units. One of the concerns that was brought up on my project was one, one access, and this was, in the pre-application meeting, Fire Marshal Funk said that, I believe, a hundred and some odd units are allowed. Webster Ridge, I believe, only has one exit and entrance, and it has a hundred and sixty units, so-
Hundred and twenty, but yes.
Oh, a hundred and twenty, okay, my mistake. So, that's more than double what mine is. In regards to, I guess, the, really, the big issue is the, is the wetland that, that I see, and I've, you know, on the original application, I, I took the word of, and the, the maps that were existing, I took, took that as, okay, those are the maps, so I'm outside of the boundary, so that was not addressed on my part. I spoke today with the, the gal from Lori Warner Dickinson from DSL for about forty to forty-five minutes, and I, I spoke with her and just asked her a great deal of questions, and to, to get to the, the point that, that she made, and, and tried to figure out why she made the statement she did. And the sticking point that I had with, with her was that she made a statement that says, "It is likely that there are wetlands on the partial." I, I asked her, "Well, how did you come to that conclusion?" And she pointed to some of the, the maps that she submitted. One of them is this, this wetland map, which clearly shows it's not on my property, which is, I, I don't know what page that is in your documents, I, I just received this today. There's, there was a, the Wapato soils diagram, and I asked her specifically about that, and I, and I, I also called two engineers, and Wapto soils are all over the state of Oregon, McLaughlin County, and a lot of it's cultivated in, in different crops, and that's, it's not necessarily a indicator, it could, can be an indicator. And then she also pointed at this LiDAR drawing, which she said that that, that has a, a point, too, and unfortunately, I apologize, I don't have the color drawing of it, but it's, it's all the same, all the way up to the, to the top, up on Abernathy, her drawing doesn't really show any distinguishing characteristics that are different. And, and I, I said, "Well, why did you, why did you not make a statement that there, there could be wetlands, and we recommend a, a delineation?" And she didn't really have a, a good question or a good answer to that, except that, "Well, we looked at some Google imaging, historical images for aerial photographs." Well, and I asked her, "Okay, did you walk the property?" "No." "Did any of your staff walk, walk the property?" "No." And I said, "Well, you know, that, that's kind of a, a statement that casts a long shadow on my application, and you very well could have written, 'There might be wetlands,'" "There could be applicant, wetlands, we," but she wrote, "There are likely wetlands." And she actually apologized in a roundabout way to me on that issue. And what I would like to suggest, I don't want to build on a wetland, I was going off of the drawings that, that were provided to me by the county, and there are metro maps and county maps and city of Gladstone maps, they do not show, and, and the DSL's map, again, does not show that the wetland is on my property. So, that's a lot of pretty good evidence that I would think most people would take for, you know, that is, is a good, good indicator. But what I would like to suggest is, maybe I just volunteer to do the wetland delineation and put it on a condition of my approval, and just, and just take, take care of it once and for all, and try to just add it, add it as a, you know, I, I spoke with her, the Lori at the DSL, and she said, she substantiated, "We cannot require you to do this." But I know that this is a, a big issue for a lot of people, and I, I don't want to build on a wetland, but I, just to get through this issue and take care of it, I, I would propose that, that I would just go ahead and hire a consultant and get, get it taken care of, and put it as a condition of approval, on, on my existing approval. I don't have a whole lot else, I guess there's gonna be some other things brought up that I will have to address after it's brought up, but, do you have any questions for me right now?
I don't right now.
Thank you for your information, though, I appreciate it and the way you presented it.
Thank you.
Oh, I do.
Okay.
So, how many apartments are we talking about?
There's fifty units. It, it, the, I, I think the appeal says fifty-two, but it's actually fifty.
Okay.
And that's the, the absolute minimum that I'm allowed to by the zoning code. I'm not, I'm not allowed to go less than that. If I wanted to build twenty, I'm not allowed to do that.
So, then, which page, then, may I ask, are we supposed to be using as to the, the site plan? 'Cause I've got on page one dash two-two-one, two-two-seven, and also two-forty-one, which shows different numbers.
Well, unfortunately, I don't ha, I don't have really any of the information that you have, I just have my original application, it, none of it was provided to me. I, I can show you-
It would be-
-the drawing, that, if, if, if it's okay, I'd like to approach and I can-
Mm-hmm.
-show you, okay.
Please.
We do have those in the packet somewhere.
Yeah. I can find them if I'm looking.
That's, that's the drawing in originally.
So, that's the one you're going with now?
Yes.
Okay. 'Cause there's been about three or four that were given, which really confused me as to what you were asking for, which kind of gave me the impression that, didn't really know what you were wanting.
Okay. So, the, the first, you want me to go back to the microphone and answer, or?
Sure, yeah, so it's on the record, if you would. So, that's the one with the four, four across?
Well, I'll just hold it up and maybe, maybe you can-
It looks like that's the one on two-two-seven.
That, I don't have the answer to that.
Okay.
This one right here.
So, so to answer your question the best I can, the, the original application, as I stated, I, I was doing my very best to try to fit the minimum required amount of units on the site, plus the parking, and that, that is a challenge, and it's, there, it is a higher density. My first choice, as I testified in the Planning Commission, is not necessarily to build this many units, but what I found was, over multiple tries with, talking with Clay and trying to come up with different scenarios, I, I just, I don't have another option, I have to meet the minimum density. The maximum density, by the way, is sixty-seven units. And so, the original application was for some three-story units, because I was trying to create more green space on, on the project. And, uh, through a little bit of just hearing some rumblings through the community and hearing that, wow, the, the, after the Webster Ridge project, the three-story, obviously, and it was not my first choice, I did not, I wasn't super excited about the three-story option, and I, when I heard people were upset about the three-story, I totally get that, I, I didn't want to build three-story, and I spent a lot of nights laying in bed, like, "How do I, how do I make this work?" So, I, I kind of had an aha moment, and I, I downsized the, the unit sizes and, and added some studios, which I hadn't even been considering, and I was able to change them all to a two-story format rather than a, a three-story format, and I was able to fit that on. So, at the first meeting, I, I submitted some additional information and said, "Hey, by the way, I really prefer the second option, I'd like to, you know, present this, and, and go, get away from the three-story down to the two-story, and I'm gonna approach again, if that's okay."
Mm-hmm, right. Yeah, we've got several of those, right.
Yeah.
That's page two-two-two in our packet.
This, this plan here, which you have right there.
Yeah. So, this is, would be the five across, like, from the parking lot, is what they would look like?
Yeah, you'd have five across, and you would be that way, and these would be the same that way.
Okay.
And, and so, the, the whole point on these is, you know, they look like houses, they're only thirty feet wide, they're two stories, so from the front, they actually look like a house, three, they're a fourplex building, they're only one-bedroom units on each one, and there's only one unit that is, is with an entry door on the front, the other three on, on the side, so when you're standing facing them, it would look like small houses. And I was trying to give them a visual, yeah.
And just clarify, and this might be redundant, and I apologize, but I, you said fifty, but I've heard fifty-two, and then I've heard forty-eight, so can you be specific?
Fifty.
Fifty, exactly.
Fifty, and that's the minimum. Forty-eight would be below the minimum.
Okay.
Fifty, the original application was for fifty-two with the three-story, and, and that has, I guess, continued on through the-
So, each size unit will roughly be how much square footage?
About six hundred square feet, and, and, sorry.
About six hundred square feet.
Okay.
And, so, are the studios that are in the middle gonna look the same as what you've just showed us on page two-twenty-two?
The, the goal would be to give, give that same, we try to give that, that same look. In order to meet the parking requirements, those, those units in the middle will be on a second floor, and there will be garages underneath.
Right.
And, and that's solely for the purpose of meeting the requirements of the parking. The parking requirement is one-point-five spaces per unit, and with those garages, it meets, it, it meets the requirement.
Each unit have a garage there?
No.
Okay.
No.
And you said roughly six hundred square feet, does that incl, and is that the same size as the studio, or what are you looking at there?
Uh, the, the units in the middle, I'm looking at around five-hundred-and-fifty square feet. I'm still trying to, because they're studios, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out a floor plan, I haven't settled on one, I, I'm not quite sure how it's gonna shake out, but the goal would be to, to match the look, and, and, and the, the units themselves are going to have a, a laminate floor that looks like hardwood floors, I'm going to do nice finishes, there'll be granite on the countertops in the kitchen, and there'll be air conditioning in each unit, and with, with the possibility of down the road, I might consider, if I can figure out a way to do it, turning, converting them to condominiums.
So, so then, that's why we don't have a diagram of the, uh, studio units, is you're still working on that?
I'm still, I'm still trying to dial it in, yeah.
Okay. So, we've got fifty?
And we have fifty units.
Okay, that's super obvious.
So, the, the majority of the units, forty of them, are the one-bedroom units, and it's, it's just the, the ten units that I'm, I'm still trying to draw the floor plan on.
So, the, the, the five units that are side by side on the-
Five buildings, yes.
Or the buildings, sorry.
Yeah.
That are side by side, the entrances are on the side, and so they would have-
One will-
Inside?
One will be in the front.
Right, I see that.
And then, and then the other three will be on the sides, and it'll, so-
Would they, one door or three doors?
There'll be separate entrances for every unit. And I-
So, there's the stairs on the outside?
There will be a, there will be a joint stairs between the buildings, set, kind of setback.
Okay, 'cause we don't have any of that kind of information, which would really be helpful in our design or review aspect of what you're asking us to do tonight. 'Cause I hadn't a clue, as, I thought you're, you know, from what I saw, just the, the one drawing, that you had inside stairs, so now, you know, and you're, you're saying that you're gonna have outside stairs?
Correct.
And, but, and then you're saying-
Setback from, setback in, kind of in the middle of the building.
Okay.
Uh, setback, kind of, gonna shield those with some strategically placed landscaping.
And then, don't mean to be, be, be technical or picky, but you, you, through this, you kept saying about making it look like a home, but then when you have outside stairs, that definitely looks like an apartment. So, I, I'm confused. But, that, you know, it would, you know, would have been helpful with, with more information in regards to that. And then, my other question I was gonna ask is, what kind of colors are you looking at doing? 'Cause that's not in the information either that was provided. And again, that's part of the design review.
There is a description, actually, on, on this, this page, it talks about the, the different facades and, and-
Right. But it's pretty vague.
So, so-
Shingles, boards, darts?
There's, there's-
Composite, uh, concrete siding is what's talked about here.
Hardy plank siding with different, there's different styles of hardy plank siding, so the, each, each building will have a, a different look to it with different colors. There'll be, uh, some, some houses will have a board-and-bat look, and others will have lap siding with shingles, and, and every, every building will have, you know, the eyebrow porches over the front entry will, will change a little bit, and, so the intent would be to give them different, a different feel, so it doesn't feel like a traditional apartment complex.
So, you're going more natural, or are we looking at blues?
Oh, no, 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 I-
Yellows, I mean, you know?
It would, if you were to go into, say, a newer, high-end subdivision, I, I would look at colors similar to those. I'm, I'm going to have a designer come in and, and pick the colors for me.
And then, so, the lighting plan that I saw, oh, let's see, what page was that on? Two-thirty. That does, okay, that's what, a question I had was, 'cause the lighting plan you have, I didn't know if this was the, um, the design that you were going with, 'cause like I say, we, we had four different- um, the design that you were going with, because like I say, we, we had four different concepts that, that were submitted to us, and, uh, and then, one, one, now I better not say that, because I'm notorious for asking more than, one more question. On page two-thirty-four, it talks about a letter from an engineer, but, that, it was going to be on the next page, but we didn't have one. And I'm not sure if that's a question for you or, um, for staff. As to, I'm not sure where this, where this picture came from, about, uh, says storm wa, storm water retention systems to be designed. It's, uh, this picture here about, okay? And it talks about a letter from an engineer, um, that says, "See letter from engineer next page. Also see notes in staff report," but I didn't see the, a letter as to explaining your- So is that from us, or is that from, or is that from you?
I mean, I'd have to, I have to give him a little bit of benefit of doubt there, counselor, in that he, he didn't put this packet together at all.
No, no, I understand that. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I'm at a little bit of a loss.
Oh, okay, then I understand.
So, so that, that picture that you have, um, what, what that represents is a, I, I found another development, and it was, it was to give a visual idea. Uh, there's two aspects of the storm water retention.
Mm-hmm.
And in this case, because a fair amount of the property is, is going to be covered, we, we do meet the landscaping requirements, but, uh, because there, there will be a lot of hard surfaces, there's probably the majority of the retention will be underground.
Right.
And then, that drawing that you were provided with represents a conceptual, just to give people a visual, because there's some new codes in place in the city of Gladstone that, that are in relation to how the, when the water comes out of the storm water retention, it goes through, and you may have seen them in, say, downtown Portland, there'll be, they're like, they're called swales, and they have, it's like a ditch with, with different plantings in it, and the, the purpose of that is to sort of, I guess, wash the water. And so, the whole-
Counselor McMahon is an expert in those areas.
I have one in my front yard.
You have one in your front yard?
Yeah, I built one.
Okay, well, I would, I will totally defer to you on that, but the whole-
It was beautiful.
The whole, the whole point is, is that the, um, it has to meet, whatever, which the engineer that I hire that designs the storm water retention system has to meet the city and county codes, and it will be reviewed by SISL Engineering, which is on contract with the city. And furthermore, any, uh, you know, self-fence and, and so on, and erosion measures will have to be put in place that meet the county and city codes, so that, uh, that it, it's, it's all up, up to the, the code, basically.
Then my last question, and I promise it will be my last.
Okay.
At least, maybe. Um, the, uh, the driveway in and out, you know, off of Abernathy Court, is pretty steep there at, where it deadens right now. How do you plan to mitigate? Because there's nothing in here at all about, about that.
So we, that did, that did come up in the, in the planning meetings, uh, planning commission meetings, and the, what, basically what will happen is, is the, the upper end of the property will be dropped down a little bit, while the lower end will be raised up with fill. And, and the, uh, Fire Marshal Funk has, has requested a, a certain percentage of grade in the parking area for his fire trucks.
Mm-hmm.
And so, in order to meet that grade, the upper end, the proposal is to just drop the upper end down. Hence, at the property line, I'll have a, a small retaining wall, and so the upper buildings from the Beatrice side will be set down. And then, on the bottom end of my property, the units will have to be raised up a little bit, and that may be just from building a, a deeper foundation to bring them up, and then backfilling around them.
So, so how, we're talking six inches, a foot, three feet?
Oh, they're-
What, what, what's the, the plan?
The top, the top will be dropped down, uh, on my, I don't know for sure until the, the topo map is complete and the engineer has worked on it, but the, uh, the idea would be the upper end would be dropped down about four feet, maybe six feet, and then that is going to alleviate the, the steepness right at Abernathy, come deadening into my property. And then the lower end of the property at the same time will be raised, probably, a, a number of feet. And I, I do not have the answer to that, because I, I don't, I'm not an engineer, but that would, that would be the-
My main, why, why I bring it up is I was on planning commission, um, back a couple of years ago, okay, several, when that, uh, court was, was approved, and, and those houses were, uh, and that was a, um, a big part of the conversation was where, you know, what was going to happen at further on south of where the, uh, the roadway stops now, you know, onto, well, in essence, now onto your property. There was a, you know, because it drops off, you know, several feet within just a, you know, a short distance.
Right.
And I saw somewhere on here like eight percent or more, and, uh, you've got that, the whole, several, I don't know how many, uh, feet, but it runs west, you know, down into, so it, it is a curiosity of mine as to, uh, why, uh, which is why I asked, so. And that will be my last question, thank you. At least this, this go around.
I, I want to kind of tag on a little bit, because I've been over there looking at that property, and I'm curious about something because of the driveway of going in and out.
Okay.
And is it going to, I mean, what about the people that are already there? I'm concerned about their driveway, and are we going to, are they going to lose any of that of their-
Not within the scope of my project. Their, their curb and sidewalks and driveways will be untouched. It's, unless, unless the, the Public Works Department says something different, but I don't see how they could, and maybe Clay could address that, but, um, I don't, I don't believe it'll be touched at all.
Because there's not a whole lot of room on either side, you know, like, and I was curious because of the fire trucks or even the police going down in there, and I parked my car, and I parked in a couple, and because there's only a very small limited of parking spaces available. So I was real concerned about the people that live there, and if they have family and friends that come. I mean, there's not a whole lot of places for them to go for parking. And so when we're coming in and out of there, it's going to be a pretty tight squeeze, I think, that's-
Well, I, you know, I, I know that I, I went through the, the pre-application process, and, and we spoke about access and, and the road width and, and the amount of units, and it, it met all the applicable criteria. And so I'm, I'm just deferring to the, to the city on that.
Okay.
I also have a comment following up on that same issue of the slope for getting in and out of the property. Uh, and I do recall the eight percent grade figure mentioned, and I think the concern on the part of a number of citizens was that if people are essentially driving uphill to get to a driveway to exit the property from the units, uh, they would need to be accelerating their cars in order to get up a hill, rather than the, the situation that many of us have, where you're driving on something flat, can put on the brakes and slowly look, and, uh, so the, the concern they were expressing was that, uh, the drivers might have to speed up in order to reach the top of the hill to get out of the property. I appreciate your description of how you plan to, uh, to alter the grade somewhat, and I wonder if the, if the, uh, the grade that the Fire Marshal has recommended is compatible with traffic safety in terms of the issue that I've described.
Okay, well, um, my anticipation of how the site will be developed and look at, at the, the completion is that these, the five upper buildings will be fairly close to the same grade. The road or the, the parking lot will, by default, be fairly level also. And so, most of the grade that you're talking about is going to be right in here, and so when people are coming out, this is, this is going to be built up to where it's fairly level to the exit. So there, there will, it will not be steep right at where the, where it joins Abernathy Court.
Okay, that's very helpful, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone have anything else?
I just want to ask, uh, Chief Funk, do you feel that the safety is there for your fire department?
In our pre-app hearing, um, well, we have fire codes that go by. Yeah, we have, we have fire codes that go by, and what we're talking about, I, I don't specify or suggest to Casey that I want to have a eight percent grade. What I tell him is my fire code will allow up to a ten percent grade, in some cases a fifteen percent grade. I don't specify what he builds his project at, just that it be within the parameters of the code. When we had our pre-app hearing, we looked at the width of Abernathy Court, and, uh, that's pre-existing, and, and it's fine. Um, and just because, as long as Casey meets the parameters on his property of a certain width, and, and, um, I had to work with him in particular on the turning angles. As I go into the property, I have to go right, I have to go left, whichever way I'm going to go, he has to meet all those parameters. So he has a maximum grade for me to go in and out. He has a maximum grade, not fire code, but a maximum grade of a parking lot, and, and how fast something could roll up and down that, uh, and then he has turning radius for me, and he met all those. So, safety-wise, he has met the requirements of the fire department.
Okay.
Did that answer your question, sir? All right.
It did.
Do you wish to add anything to the staff report?
I can't think of anything, no.
Does the council have any more questions of the applicant? All right, at this time, I'd like to move on to the public testimony, please. Please state your name. We'll first hear testimony from proponents. No. From people who want to, who are in support of this. No, you're fine.
We've received no proponent.
I'm sorry?
We've received no proponent speaker.
Okay, all right. Then we will move on to the opponent. So when you come up, as Mayor Stippel had said earlier, you just need to state your name. You don't have to give your address. Thank you.
Brian Early.
Good evening. Again, my name's Brian Early, and I represent a group of concerned citizens that, from the initial, uh, application proposal that was submitted to us, it was very clear, a group of concerned citizens, banded together, you might say, to research, to consider and understand, and then to come to some fairly clear conclusions that this proposal has some fundamental problems, that we are in opposition to the proposal as it is presently stated. And so tonight-
Mr. Early, would you speak closer into the-
Oh, I apologize, thank you. Okay, so what I would like to do, we have several people who are going to give specific kinds of testimony in various forms, and this is kind of the format that we would like to propose. Uh, we will have a discussion about the Olson wetlands. Uh, we will have a consideration of community testimony in terms of participation and support. Uh, we will look at some considerations for alternatives, and then would like to give some summaries and considerations on this. Uh, but before we do, I just want to ask a, a couple of questions, if I may. Uh, I understand you've already walked the place, the, with the property. Have you had a chance to read through the packet? It's substantial, to say the least. I just want to find out. And were you able to see the recent submission from our attorney to you? Uh, that was a late go, uh, but, um, an email?
Oh, yeah, I did.
Okay.
I haven't.
Okay. That's somewhat important, because it sheds some light on additional information that I believe you should probably consider before making a decision. All right, with that in mind, I'd like to turn it over to our first presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, my name is Britta Burdett. Uh, so I wanted to talk a little bit about the wetland and the habitat and the codes that are specifically related to it, but you guys actually kind of hammered out a lot of what I was going to talk about, which was nice. But I did want to address a couple of things, um, kind of related specifically to what's already been discussed. Um, Casey said that he, you know, he, he's right, that DSL doesn't exactly require the delineation. It's more to do with, you want to do it kind of for your own protection. So he's offering to do it kind of as a courtesy, but really he should do it just to protect himself from fines, because DSL doesn't usually get involved in the planning stages very much, other than if you, like, really lean on them, they will give you advice and whatnot, but, um, mostly they're there to impose fines after the fact, unfortunately. Uh, the other entity that would get involved with that is the Army Corps of Engineers, and, um, they're actually aware of this development as well, and they concur with DSL's findings that they think a delineation is also required. Um, uh, yeah, I shouldn't elaborate about that maybe, but, because it's long, but, um, so actually, um, Michael brought up the exact reason why I was concerned about this initially, and I was really hoping that this could all be addressed in the planning stages and not come to this, um, which was the proximity of the Olson wetland, as opposed to like, the, I, I was surprised by DSL's findings that there may be wetlands right on the parcel. That wasn't even what I was expecting to have happen. I just wanted to find out, because the Olson is so close, and it has never been delineated formally, like, was there a requirement for delineation, and that's still kind of hanging up in the air, because if there is, it's a Gladstone requirement. So that is laid out, um, and it's really vague, and I've written about this extensively, that it's kind of implied in the codes as opposed to overtly stated, because you want the delineation to be able to inform you where your buffer zones are supposed to be. And the main one that that is kind of a sticky point with is in seventeen dot two-five, which is the habitat code. And there's been quite a bit of controversy over whether we have to adhere to the habitat stuff, specifically because of, like, uh, conflict over maps, like, which map do we have to adhere to? So, um, the map that Clay presented tonight, I was like, okay, that explains it, you know, because he is using a different map than what I had personally been looking at, which was Metro's map. So whether we have to adhere to Metro's map is, is kind of a question that we want to address, and, um, our attorney did talk about this in, um, the stuff, that he, he talked quite a bit about seventeen-two-five, and that there's a lot missing from the submitted plan to be able to be in compliance with seventeen-two-five if we do have to adhere to it. So, but the reason why I think that we probably do have to observe Metro's maps is because, um, as I think has been discussed, seventeen-two-five all came from Metro's Title thirteen. Uh, Metro had a requirement that all the cities under their, like, umbrella had to adopt their Title thirteen or else come up with their own standards, and they said, um, you can adopt our standards or you can write your own, but if you do the second thing, your standards have to be at least as strict as ours. You can't be less strict. So that's exactly why I'm thinking, well, then we can't use a map that's outdated or that doesn't show habitat if Metro has one that's more recent. But also because seventeen-two-five, it's seventeen dot two-five dot oh-for-oh says that if there exists an approved updated map, then we have to observe that one. So I think just there, it's like, okay, yeah, I think we have to observe Metro's map, which means automatically those standards apply. So as to your question, like, well, can't he just apply for fill permits? You know, if they do find wetlands there, then he could apply for fill permits, true. If they don't find wetlands there, then that's, you know, then he should be free and clear, unless we have to observe the habitat stuff, in which case he has to have this, all these elaborate things. But again, like, our attorney laid out all the stuff that's, that he should have if we have to observe seventeen dot two-five. So, there's all that stuff, and then, um, I think that's kind of the bulk of what I've been kind of concerned about this. But then I also wanted to address, because, um, you mentioned that John Runyon had expressed concern about the Olson wetland, and he did, he is working with a group of the guys who are, the people who are restoring, uh, the Ryanairson Creek watershed, which is, uh, the wetland kind of on the other side of McLaughlin, that like, from what I've observed, it looks like that used to be one big wetland, and McLaughlin cut it in half. So they've actually kind of had their eye on the Olson for a long time as a potential site of restoration. Um, when you mentioned, uh, wetland banking stuff, um, if you kind of have an understanding of that, how that stuff works, that the Army Corps of Engineers has to keep track of, like, every time somebody applies for a removal fill permit, they've got to make sure that somewhere else in the country, um, somebody's restoring a wetland, and is this because of the legislation that was passed in the eighties that's the, like, no net loss of wetland policy? So I had understood that to just mean, oh, if you have an existing wetland, you have to keep it, but that's not true. You can fill. I didn't realize that if you have to pay, like, something like over a hundred thousand dollars an acre- I didn't realize that you have to pay like something like over $100,000 an acre for removal fill permit, but you can do it, it's just you have to make sure that there's enough, you know, restored wetland and mitigation bank. So, my point in bringing this up, is that I think it would actually be in the city's best interest, to try to do whatever it took to restore the Olson, because there are government entities that will just like throw money at you to do it, because they want restored wetlands, and expanded wetlands, including land acquisition. So, I'm just bringing that up, because you could approve this development on conditions, but I have to say, I think it's highly unlikely that it can be approved in its current incarnation. I think it would have to be really significantly altered, especially if we have to observe 17.25. I mean, the wetland stuff is something that could be like figured out, if Casey was willing to pay the very large fees, it would be accompanied by the removal fill permits. But the habitat stuff makes this development, it makes it impossible, logistically speaking. So, I just kind of want to put that in you guys' mind, that there are land acquisition grants available that are really easy to get, because there's so much incentive to restore and expand wetlands. And I think one of our group is going to talk about that a little bit more, so I'm going to kind of just... Oh, but I also wanted to mention that, I hope you guys all read the letter from Steve Johnson, about Gladstone's water issues, sewer and water issues, which I saw that and just went, oh, man, you know, that maybe should have been a deal breaker from the beginning, I thought that was kind of huge. So, restoring the wetland would actually help that situation, whereas putting a big apartment complex wouldn't hurt the situation, so that's another thing I would like you to keep in mind, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jacob Wies, and I live at 1205 Windsor Drive. It's a house and property that's adjacent to the Cutting property. I wanted to bring a video to show you, in case you hadn't got a chance to get down to the wetland, and show you why it's worth caring about, so it's about a minute and 20 seconds long.
We have music to it, but these two copyrights don't like that.
This is about two months ago.
Thank you.
You have a permit for that helicopter?
It is licensed.
Nice picture.
Can you provide a little context as to where you are on the property?
Yeah.
So, this is close to, and you can see in the background here, the corner of the Airstream property. So, this is further on the west side.
Thank you.
When you said you lived on Windsor, do you live right at the very end of Windsor?
Yes, if you go down Windsor to the end of the last house on the left.
Okay, because I was down there, and I kind of walked a little bit, but I didn't go too far, and I wasn't quite sure, so that helps.
Yeah. So, just the last thing I want to say, is please consider all the information that was submitted during the city planning commission meetings, and everything that's in the packet. I know it's a lot of information to go over, but there's so much more than you're going to hear tonight at this meeting, that's been already covered.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the video.
We'll have no clapping, please.
Sorry.
Thank you.
My name is Andrew Collins Anderson, and I am the executive director from the North Clackamas Urban Watersheds Council. I came and spoke with you, did a presentation recently. I am not representing the citizens group, but I, the organization put on an event several months ago in May, regarding Reinerston Creek. We have an active grant, doing a restoration on the, some private property below River Road, and the neighborhood community members attended that event, and we spoke about this project in Olson Wetlands, and they have asked the watershed council to come and comment on this potential development. So, that's why I'm here today. It's also an important property to the watershed council. Reinerston Creek and Olson Wetlands are degraded water bodies, and they also provide very important benefits to the city from watershed, water quality enhancement, and habitat, and these are some of the last remaining pieces of what historically was a area that was covered in wetlands, and these types of water quality, or water resources. So, these are some of the final remaining pieces, and we appreciate the partnership that we have with the city of Gladstone, the watershed council does, we've worked on several projects together. And this Olson Wetlands, and this property, could potentially have impacts on past investments that the city has made, including the natural, Reinerston Natural Area Restoration, that is being worked on as we speak. They've recently withdrawn the water from the pond there at the confluence with the Willamette River. And in regards to this project, we, after hearing the conversation of staff and the council, it seems that the city's map of your environmental overlays, your map of water quality resources and natural, or habitat conservation areas, is very inadequate, and I think we'd like to recommend that you get a new map, an updated map for the city, which would help alleviate these issues in the future with the potential of building in a wetland. And we recommend that you do do a natural resource assessment and a delineation for this project, as was mentioned. Yeah, basically, you've hit on a lot of what we wanted to say, and just that we asked that you, you think of these, some of these pieces of property, the Olson Wetlands that you own, and Reinerston Creek, as some of the last remaining pieces of these creeks in this watershed, that is essential to protecting the city from maybe potential future flooding, improving water quality, these are essential resources that you should be protecting, so... And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
The downstream project you're talking about, also on Reinerston Creek, from its confluence with the Willamette up to approximately River Road. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't that part of the making up for past ends at Portland Harbor? I mean, essentially, it's...
There's two, so there's the Reinerston Natural Area Restoration, which is a part of the Portland Harbor, and the trustees council, that goes up to some, that goes up to some private property. The watershed council, in partnership with an organization called Dig In, got a grant from Metro to do natural area restoration with the private landowners in between River Road and that project. So, it's, there's two projects there.
Right.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Nisha Hi-Ma. I live across the street from the proposed property, and I am also one of the concerned members of, well, of our group. Today, I am sharing with you the collection of 396 signatures from concerned members of our community opposing the apartment complex. Some of our concerns and grievances are, number one, which has been the most talked about, is Olson Wetlands and the close proximity to the proposed project. I'm not going to go into any further discussion about that, just because Britta has done quite well in that aspect. The second concern is safety issues accessing Abernathy Lane and crossing the trolley trail. The trolley trail has become a popular walking and biking path in Gladstone community, and we're happy to have it in our neighborhood. But adding 48 units, excuse me, that was my, what I thought was going in, but now the 50 units will bring increased traffic volumes, approximately 50 to 100 cars, or additional vehicles, to this section of the neighborhood, and our streets are not equipped to handle that volume. Looking at the proposed entrance, one must ponder how it is possible for two lanes of traffic to enter and exit through this court, which is barely adequate for the property owners of Abernathy Court. More concerning is increased potential for pedestrian injury. The proposed entrance will cross the Abernathy Trail, which enters into a small cul-de-sac of Abernathy Court. The intersection is a blind spot where it's exiting onto Abernathy Lane due to the curve of the street, and the same is true of the intersection of Beatrice Avenue and Abernathy Lane, which is the next street up. Both intersections have had near collisions with bicyclists and pedestrians on multiple occasions, and one day, this could prove to be fatal. Additionally, the entrance to the proposed apartment beyond the court, which was discussed a little earlier, was an 8% grade. And like you discussed, coming up the hill and having to accelerate, you don't have good vision in that area, and that could potentially be a problem as well. And also, Mr. McCarthy had made other, had other concerns regarding that, that he had mentioned that's in your packet. With that said, we believe that a traffic impact study is necessary for the safety of our community. Also, a concern that Britta had mentioned was the outdated infrastructure, and that was also mentioned by Steve Johnson. Another concern is parking and overflow into the surrounding areas and increased crime. Additionally, diminished property values. Housing around Ridge Gate Apartment Complex has already dropped, has seen a drop in property values. One member of the canvassing team talked to a property owner who is currently trying to sell her home in the neighborhood. She was frustrated her house won't sell, even after lowering her asking price. The number one complaint from potential buyers was the close proximity to the new apartment development, which overshadowed the houses, so much for her retirement investment. Last but not least is Gladstone has a 40% rental rate, and the numbers will increase with a revitalization program that's planned for Main Street Gladstone. As you are aware, the plans entail options for condos and low-rise apartments with storefronts below. Ridge Gate Apartment Complex opened three to four months ago, and has yet to fill all of its units. Additionally, the area behind Oregon City Shopping Center, which is, I believe, called Clackamas Cove, is another encroaching development. So, we ask, why are we flooding Gladstone with another apartment complex, when it is clearly, that we clearly have an overabundance? Why take the chance on damaging our natural resources and green spaces like Olson Wetlands to make room for another apartment complex? Like Brian earlier has said at a previous meeting, we do not oppose development, but we have a desire to ensure the development and local municipalities practice responsible construction, and based upon our research, we believe that there are other viable, less impactful alternatives for this development to consider. So, we ask, or we actually plead that the committee halt this application until the delineation study has been completed. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead, come on up.
Steve Orsley, 1060 Beatrice Avenue, Gladstone, Oregon. Let's consider for a moment, say we get through all this tonight, and Mr. Cutting's application gets denied, could he build single-family on the property as it's zoned now? Part of this is referenced in Sean Malone's letter to city council, which was added about, you know, five hours ago, so I apologize for the delay on that. But what do the municipal codes say? In short, they give you the ability to make considerations, and given the community feedback about high density in this neighborhood, as well as the ever-increasing support regarding considerations for and restoration of the wetland, it's in the city's best interest to research this alternative. Where does Metro stand? It's stated that they require 25% of housing stock to be multifamily. What specific coding or ordinance requires that, or applies in Gladstone? From what our group has been able to find, and whom we've been able to contact, meeting density standards is encouraged but not required, and other factors, such as the environmental issues raised with this property in particular, also weigh in on these standards. Adhering to density requirements is imposed by the respective municipality, and when the GMC was adopted, along with any subsequent revision, it was done so with the approval of both county and state. If it exists within the GMC, it is fully within the city's power to enforce. 17.14 allows single-family in a multi-residential as a conditional use, subject to GMC 17.70. That contains approval criteria, such as being allowed by code as a conditional use, sustainability for the site, and so on. Furthermore, conditions of approval are granted to, subject to additional conditions that are found necessary, to protect the best interests of the surrounding area or city as a whole. Outlined in my letter, and with support by additional testimony, we believe there's enough to satisfy the requirements of this article. Considering the wetland, could Mr. Cutting build dwellings on lot sizes smaller than 5,000 square feet, as is required by MR zoning? According to 17.14.050 dimensional standards, 17.72 variances, or 17.76 exceptions, those permit otherwise. Per 17.72.020, given the explanation in my letter, I believe those circumstances are met, and that letter was included in the packet, and I apologize, you do not have that, you know, in the five volume that you were given, I do not have that exact number right now. Per 17.76.0205A, smaller lot sizes would have no greater adverse impact on the neighborhood than the existing use. 17.76.030 states that a lot size smaller than the minimum lot area standard may be developed with a use allowed in the zoning district. However, that lot size is limited to one, single-family dwelling. Why does this matter? And I actually do have the reference for this, in your packet on page 1-113. Given that approximately 40% of Mr. Cutting's property, according to the Metro Title 13 GIS, has either classified habitats on it, or areas which disturbance would have an impact on nearby inventories, we need to consider alternatives that minimize or negate it entirely. And just to clarify, that 40%, about 15% of it, according to the GIS, which Sean Malone's letter does include GIS with some buffers, as far as the wetland's concerned, but it does show the yellow area as a Class B habitat, about 15% of his property has that, and about the other 25% is the affected, you know, soils affecting nearby resources. So, the alternatives that we propose, allowing conditional usage for single-family zoning after the proper delineation has been performed, if it is determined Mr. Cutting is able to do so. This minimizes impact relative to high-density housing. What happens if Mr. Cutting considers himself too burdened to develop on this parcel, due to any imposed setbacks, potential for civil penalties, or simply wants to hand the property off? There are acquisition programs in place, which I will submit for you guys, like the Oregon Water Resources Department, and the Oregon Parks and Recreation, were made specifically for properties like the Olson Wetland, to assist in restoration and enhancement of inventoried water features. MS4 permits also allow, if within the budget, with acquiring enhancement plans, or master plans, as far as restoration goes, and it's been stated, with volunteer work to clean the wetland up, by some estimations, would provide said work for high school students or any volunteering bodies for as long as 12 years. There's a lot of invasive species in there, namely Armenian blackberry and English ivy. So, what happens if Mr. Cutting does not follow through with a delineation? Fines can be imposed on the county, city, and developer by governing bodies such as the Department of State Lands, DEQ, and the Army Corps of Engineers, if it got to that. These fines at the city level would burden the taxpayer, please do not burden the taxpayer. Questions to be asked or considerations to be made, we ask that the city take the possible damage of publicly-owned property into consideration, consider the alternatives presented before you today. Sean Malone, the attorney we hired to represent us, has offered his services to develop findings in support of denial if necessary, and our efforts have been backed by representatives of local governing bodies, such as the Department of State Lands, the Army Corps of Engineers, the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, Northwest Urban Watershed Council, Cascade Environmental Group, and over 300 of your peers in the community. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay, yeah, you can come back.
So, I'd like to bring a little conclusion to our presentation this evening. So, in your packet, if you want to reference, 1-36 is where my letter is, I'm only going to briefly reference it, but it's utilizing the same metaphor, I'd like to keep it simple, because I'm a kind of a simple guy. So, we're talking about the square peg and round hole metaphor, and in a summary, we just don't believe that this application for this type of proposal fits. It doesn't fit in a number of venues. First of all, we've been very clear, and I think it seems that it may not fit with the Olson Wetlands, and it possibly may not fit with habitat environmental scenarios that are currently in the area. It does not seem to It does not seem to fit the parking criteria. We haven't talked about that much, but there has been talk and continuation to understand that there's additional parking outside of the existing property will overflow into Abernathy Court, Abernathy Lane, et cetera. That needs to be understood and considered in this process that we, you know, the neighborhood should not have to suffer for that. Also, I just realized that there's a, doesn't fit with possible noise when you're thinking about acceleration up that hill. Well, I can already hear the cars rumbling up the hill with regards to their egress. It may not fit with traffic and safety concerns. Just because the codes don't call for it, it doesn't mean that it's justifiable to have a, a traffic impact study. We've talked about this previously at the Planning Commission level. We believe that there should be some kind of traffic impact study, especially since the trolley trail has been integrated. Nineteen ninety-one, nineteen eighty-one, I believe it was, Councilman Reissner, you mentioned, there was a traffic impact study required when the original proposer had a multiple, I guess apartments that he was trying to have, and that's why ultimately it became four homes on that property because of a traffic impact consideration. Does not fit the neighborhood. With only one egress into and out of on Abernathy Court and the spillage into the existing neighborhood, we have two distinct domiciles there. If it were going into another area, it wouldn't be so bad, but it just, it doesn't fit where we're at. With the recent involvement of DSL, the Army Corps of Engineers, the testimony of other organizations, the research of our attorney, which by the way, again, there is supplemental information that he is providing in there that's pertinent and germane that I believe you need to research if, if necessary, please do that. It seems certain that a denial of this proposal is essential for the welfare of our city's integrity, as well as for the aforementioned square peg and round hole concerns that we have. The proposal also, it seems to be incomplete. There seems to be a number of things that you are wrestling with in terms of, it's not there, you don't see it, so because you don't, how can you make a justifiable decision at this point when there seems to be several things that are not there for you to, to make a decision on? So again, we plead, plead to you to make a reasonable and proper decision that is ethical and justifiable in the sight of our community. Thank you so much for our allowance. And by the way, please forgive me for the clapping, pooh-pooh. I was following building the program protocol. We, we did this last time, so apologize.
That's all right. No problem. Thank you.
Question, question, Mr. Early, and I meant to address this to Mr. Worsley. This from Mr. Malone, an attorney, it's dated today, it's said, hand-delivered to me. I, I just first saw it when I got here, so I'm assuming nobody's really had a chance to look at this yet, and this may be very germane to the process, so just pointing that out.
Maybe icing on the cake, depending on where the decision of the council is.
Do you have a copy?
I do, I just got it.
Okay. No, 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 I know, I know. We, we got it in here. I just wanted to make sure you.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't read it.
Well, that makes two of us, or looks like maybe a dozen of us.
One point that I would like to leave you with, and this is something that seems to be different in the, in the original considerations, and, and maybe you can identify this, Mr. Glasgow, is that the attorney mentions that an MR proposal needs to have a minimum of ninety thousand square feet. This particular proposal only has the one point five acres, which is only sixty-five thousand three hundred and forty square feet, and so wondered if that is a concern?
The MR zone does not have a specific minimum lot size. It, it backs its way into it through density calculations, but there's no magic number other than for a single-family dwelling, which is a conditionally use, a single-family dwelling, not a bunch of them.
All right. Thank you. I was only citing our testimony of the council. All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Now, at this time, does the applicant have?
No.
Oh, we have one, oh, I'm sorry. So we have another person?
Dick Martin.
I apologize.
Hi, I'm Dick Martin, and I think I'm the only person in the room that lives right on Abernathy Lane. And believe me, I watch the people walking up and down the bike path, and there's definitely a problem, a very safety issue of people doing that. And I, I don't know if any have taken a look at Abernathy Court, but I think these people could have the luxury of parking, their visitors parking on each side of the street, and when they do that, there is one lane to get in and out of there. There will not be two lanes of traffic to get in and out if they are parked on the street. If they're parked in the driveways, there are probably two lanes, but not if anybody is parked in the street. There's one lane for that many people to get in and out of. And I guess everybody's covered anything that I might have had to talk about. I guess, we've lived here thirty-one years. It's been great. I've loved the city. My wife has worked here in City Hall, and we know most of the people around here, and I, one of the things that bothers me about this, and some of the other things that I guess you folks are much responsible, and the Planning Commission are responsible for doing, or making decisions on, and that is that I look around the city now, and this division up there off of Webster, and what, what's happened to those homeowners up there is just a sad situation. And I don't know if people get perspectives of what things are going to look like when they get, ask for an approval of you folks, but there's another one being built right down on Arlington right now, and I don't have the address or not, but this, they're building, they're building, it's dwarfing this house next door to them. It is, it's huge. The people right next to them are just going to look up at this house on both sides. And I think that's sad. I think that we, as a community, ought to be able to have residences in our town that similar to what's here already. So it doesn't, we just don't drive down the street, and all of a sudden there's this huge building sitting there. And I don't know if, if you folks have had a chance to look this, but I would just like to show you this because it's something that I think, if I was living, if any of you folks were living here, this is a before and after picture of what's happened to that property up there.
Yeah, we got that in our package.
And that is just sad.
I live there.
You live there. I, I, I feel for you.
In Webster Ridge, in the apartment, sorry.
This is what it looks like, this is what it was, and this is what it looks like now. And I sincerely hope that we take that into consideration when we're approving things of this. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Hi, Bill Osborne. Most of the points I was going to talk about have been brought up already. Couple of them here, there was talk about that Mr. Cutter had talked to the county about the zoning and such. And in the Planning Commission meetings, they were talking about how there's not very much, or there's no more, what is it, multifamily zone property. But we do have that here in Gladstone. I believe the property up there where Council McMahon lives was originally commercial property. So I know some of that can be rezoned. There's been talk about rezoning this to potentially put in houses and things, or, or less apartments. And I believe with Mr. Cutter talking to the county instead of the city, there may have been a disconnect on some of the, the communication on that. Another thing that I don't think was brought up was, i- if you have a bunch of apartments down there, fifty of them, a lot of people are going to have animals, a lot of those animals are going to be cats. Cats do a lot of, have a destructive nature in, in their hunting. They're going to be wandering the wetlands down there and killing the little critters down there, which if you walk down through there, there's, I know a lot of frogs, and there's birds and, and other things. So I think that's something that needs to be taken into consideration. I think it's a pretty easy decision to make, since a lot of things seem to be missing on this in the name of progress and development. In the past, when we were more ignorant, we filled in many of wetlands before we realized their benefit to us, and that's one of the issues. We had so many problems with flooding, amongst other things. So I think that's something that hopefully you guys will take into consideration. You're also here, of course, to represent the residents of Gladstone and Gladstone itself. And this development, I don't think benefits either of those. I think it benefits whoever's going to develop the property and make a buck off of it. Certainly, it's going to impact the neighborhoods. It was brought up about the, what it does to the, the price of your houses, and it will, it will impact people financially in the area in a negative way. And those are things that the people of Gladstone don't want to see happen. And on this, almost as unique, I guess, as a, a full solar eclipse, is that Steve Johnson and Bill Osborne both agree on this issue, and there's not too many things the two of us agree on, so hopefully, when you guys, hopefully, when you guys vote afterwards, you vote to deny this application. I think a lot of steps needed to be done before we got to this point. They weren't, and certainly, I would like to see things done the right way so that there's no lawsuits against anybody in the future, be it the city, be it Mr. Cutter, or whoever. So please take that in consideration when you're voting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne.
Thank you.
Next.
Last one, Mindy Garlington.
Hi, Mindy Garlington. I am the vice chair of our Parks Board, and I'm here on behalf of the parks. The trolley trail and the Olson Wetlands, both are on our list of parks, and I would like to just implore all of you to remember that five years down the line, when whatever is built there is built there. Those should come first and foremost to your decisions in what you ask of the builder and/or what you decide to do as a council with those properties. The trolley trail is what it is, and there are a lot of people that use it, and we're looking to connect it, and we, you know, all of these little notes in our park master plan that come up against that, and it's going to be really hard to do anything with that if there's a change in it. So we want to keep that the way it is. We want to keep the usability the way it is. So I, I'd ask you to do that. And then the other thing is the wetlands. Every last inch of that property matters, every inch of it, all the way up to wherever the next property abuts it. It's important. Every little creature, every blade of grass, every ounce of that soil matters, and the Parks Board would like you guys to know that we care about that, and we want to make sure that whatever is asked of the builder is the strongest that you can get for that property, that, that it's protected to the ninth degree. It's just got to be, and there can't, you know, I, I just firmly believe that. The other thing I'm asking is that if you keep us posted on it, we talked about it at great lengths at our last meeting, and we have another meeting coming up, and we'd certainly like to know where the city council stands about what we're going to be concerned about in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any more? Okay. All right. Does the, at this time, does the applicant have a rebuttal? And any further comments you would like to make?
Okay, so what's been said? I, I made some notes. I'm going to try to address everything that I can. Couple things. The, the, the property is zoned for multifamily, and it, as, as was spoken to in the Planning Commission meetings, it's probably, I don't know the exact time when that started, but it sounds like it's since the nineteen sixties. So we're looking at fifty or sixty years. This property was for sale before I purchased it for about nine months. I have labored for three years trying to find the highest and best use, and as I testified earlier, trying to do the nicest project, and, and as, as Clay can attest, I peppered him, excuse me, with many different designs, and ultimately, they just did not meet the density. I had a lot of different ideas of little village pod scenarios where there's small micro dwellings with, with a, a center common area and things like that, lots of different ideas, and ultimately, the density just did not work. And it's not my job as a property owner to revamp the zoning code. And, and it, the comprehensive zoning code is, you know, there's been a lot of people in the audience that have, have spoken with a number of them, have suggested, well, why don't we just go through this process and try to get it to be changed? Well, I, number one, I, I don't have, I've sat on it for three years already. I, I don't have the resources to try to change the zoning code from what it is. And so what I'm doing is working with what it is. I, I have not gone for the maximum density, I've gone for the bare minimum, the absolute minimum that I can do, because I, I didn't originally want to build that many units. There, there have been, well, I'm going to touch on a couple other things and then finish up. The sewer, there, there's somebody brought up that the sewer was substandard. Well, in the pre-application meeting, right at the bottom of Windsor Court in the public right-of-way, there's a twelve-inch sewer main, and there's three people in the pre-application meeting, Jim Wynott and two other fellows, and I can't remember their names, but they testified that the, as well as Pat Cecil, that there was plenty of capacity for the sewer. The, the storm sewer is, is, has to be designed so that there's no more storm runoff than is currently running off the property. So that is an engineering scenario that has to be designed by an engineer, and then reviewed by Cecil Engineering to determine that it's correct, and then approved. And it's all implemented through the, the city and the county inspectors. The, the pet issue, my intent would be to not have pets on the property. I, I prefer not to have pets in my rentals, as I testified in the Planning Commission meeting. The caveat to that is, is there are state laws that are directed to service animals, and that's, that's out of my control. And so if somebody has a service animal, I have to accommodate that as a landlord, but I, I do not prefer to have pets in my units, and that's, is not, with a small six-hundred square foot unit, it's not the most optimal anyway. One thing that I'd like to bring up is that, and I don't know if folks have, you folks have seen it, is, is that at one point, I proposed to the city a, a potential site for the library, and I basically was shut down. I, I worked on that with the, and I, it's two or three or four city managers ago, and I, I can't remember his name, but he thought it was a great idea, but he was shot down by the library board. So I, I'm, I was looking for the highest and best use for the property, and I'm left with the zoning of the property, and I'm having to move forward. I can't, in fact, at one of the meetings, at the Planning Commission meeting, there was somebody in the audience that spouted off, well, I don't understand why the developer doesn't just give it to the city as a park. Well, obviously, I have a vested interest in it, in a very financial investment, and, and I can't do that. I, I have to move forward. So that's, I'm, I'm, again, trying to apply with the, the least amount of units I can do, and I've hit that minimum. Somebody from San Francisco or Seattle might come in and try to do the sixty-seven units. I'm not doing that. I've lived in Gladstone twice, and I've owned property in Gladstone for fifteen or twenty years. So I, I, I love Gladstone. It's a great town, and that's why I bought this property here. So my goal is to build the nicest little complex I can do, and I understand and I feel for the people on the, I think it's, is it the Webster Ridge property? That's a, that's a hard thing to stomach, to have three-story buildings, and that's why I accommodated, I, I, as I stated earlier, I did not want to build three-story ones, and I, I figured out a way to go down to two- And I figured out a way to go down to two-story, and the fact that the topography slopes down, they're going to be pretty hidden. And also, I tried to design them to look as much as possible like houses and not in an apartment complex. You know, I guess, I guess to close, I get the desire of the people in the room, that the not-in-my-backyard feeling. I wish there was an easy solution where I had a piece of property on the outside of town, but I don't. I have this property, and this property was for sale, like I said, for nine months. Anybody could have bought it. I tried to work a deal where there was no purchase, where it was a lease to the city, and I couldn't get the city to even talk to me. And so, I'm doing what I can to move forward with the property I have. And, you know, during this whole process, I've had, I've had people call and veiled threats over the phone. I've had a number of people trespass on the property with the intent to try to find a reason to turn down this application. And I get that, I guess I get that, but, you know, it's frustrating. I have a financial interest in this, and I do have property rights, and I'm meeting the density, I'm meeting the setbacks, I'm meeting everything I can meet on the zoning code, and it was approved by the Planning Commission. So, I would just appeal to you that, as I stated, I would propose that I do the wetland delineation and add it as a condition of approval to my existing approval. And then, once we get that delineation back, then we just, you know, figure out what to, where to go from there. So, that's all I have.
Ask questions, Counselor? Can I ask a quick question?
Of course.
So, if we approve it, and we, and one of the conditions is you do the soil survey, and you find that it's 25% wetlands, you would still be able to build, I assume, correct? You would just have to do some mitigation somewhere else if, is your understanding of it, or maybe Clay has a better understanding?
Honestly, I'm at a loss on that. I just don't know the answer to that question. I would hope that there would be some sort of way to figure it out, whether it be maybe a reduction of some units or some of the other ideas that were talked about. I just, I just don't, I've never had to deal with that, so I just don't know.
Can I just jump in on this real quick? Because it's pretty simple. What would happen, let's say 50% of the property is suddenly mapped as wetland, that would remove 50% of the acreage from calculation of density. Boom. So, the end result would be fewer units, 50% fewer in that case. Or, there could be mitigation done off-site, and, you know, could still construct in there, but mitigate for it off-site. That becomes relatively complicated, particularly in Gladstone's case with the language that's lacking in 17.27.
Ms. Glasgow, would he, if he, you had a 50% mitigation, well, let's say he didn't mitigate, let's say he actually managed on-site. So, he still, he still would maintain a, he's no longer maintaining the buffer, right? He's now controlling systems on-site because he's now managing a wetland on 50% of the property. I guess that's a yes or no?
Right, I'm following you, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. One thing else that strikes me, one of the citizens, I think Ms. Burdette indicated, she spoke to Army Corps of Engineers. So, there's a possibility that since it's a federal waterway wetland, there may be additional monitoring and management principles that have to go on the site, anyway. And I just am saying, if you do contact somebody who's a specialist or consultant, you probably should ask that question, too, about NIPD's permits and additional permits for discharging into a federal waterway, because apparently, it might be a federal waterway wetland, which would make sense going into the Willamette thing in Columbia.
Right. Well, the plan for the discharge on the storms system was talked about in the pre-application meeting, and there is an existing storm drain manhole, I believe, somewhere right there in the easement for Abernathy Lane. And so, the talk was, is to not discharge into the wetland at all, but go into that city-maintained system, and then it would be discharged out of that.
So, I noticed, though, you had a buffer zone, or you had, I believe it was, it's kind of a swale area.
So, the reality is, as I spoke to before, was that the, there's enough hard surfaces there that there's going to be, you know, a fair amount of surface water. So, the reality is, is we'll probably have some sort of a stormwater detention underground in the parking area. And then, that buffer that you're speaking of that's adjacent to the wetlands would be the bio-swale.
So, that would be the scrubbing zone. You're retaining and then scrubbing on it's outbound.
Correct.
Okay. The other thing I was going to say, if I may for a moment, I think a couple things popped into my head as I was looking here. Mr. Early's letter to us indicates that, I think I'll just go ahead and quote this, he wishes you were a chump, because it's a lot harder to basically come out in opposition. So, and I appreciate that, too, Mr. Cutting, about the way that you've approached your project. I think the wetland issue's an issue, but I do appreciate how you've done, how you've approached this. And honestly, I don't think this is really a NIMBY case. You know, in my experience, a NIMBY case is absolutely nothing, you know, at all. And I think some folks have offered up additional development opportunities. And I also understand from a developer's standpoint, those don't necessarily fit your scenario. But, you know, I think folks in the neighborhood were actually pretty cooperative about seeing other potential uses, not particularly 50 units. So, I'm just hoping that both sides realize you guys have a very good relationship in this, in this particular issue, considering the emotionality and the other parts of it.
Right, right. And I'm glad you brought that up, because I actually did a little drive-around with Mr. Early, and we met for probably an hour and a half or two hours, and we talked at length and actually found out that we know some common people, friends with some common people. And there was, there's been some different ideas floated around about like, well, let's, and one of the comments tonight were, "Let developer build single-family." Well, the reality is, is that putting a little subdivision on a, it's really, it's not that big of a site.
It's an acre.
It's an acre and a half. And the dynamics of doing a subdivision, and I'm going through, I have a small night-hot subdivision in Gladstone that is taking over two years to process and develop, and I'm still working on it. And the, unfortunately, you know, if I could, I wish I could figure out a way to make everybody happy. The reality is, if I, and I explained to Mr. Early in our car ride, in our talk, is that, say, for example, if I were able to do a single-family development and do a small subdivision, my, it would cost me more to develop, it would take two or three times as long to develop, my return on investment would be cut in half. Those are all round numbers. But from a financial perspective, it makes zero sense for me. And that's a big stretch, because it's not even zoned that. It's zoned multifamily. So, I'm dealing with the zoning that I have. And as I've testified, I've, and Clay probably got tired of me sending him diagrams and drawings of all these little ideas that I had, and none of them worked. And I really, I wanted to create, if you ever go down River Road and you see Rose Villa down northern part of River Road, they have these cute little one-story homes, the little patios and common areas down the middle. I wanted to kind of do like a 55-plus little bedroom community, really cute and cozy, and I had this idea of taking the cafe lights that you can get at Costco and stringing them between the units and having them on a timer, and they would go on every night, you know, for the residents and things like that. And I just, I couldn't make it work, because I couldn't meet the density. And so, I tried. I tried for three years, and at some point, I have to say, "Okay, I'm going to go with what I have available to me." So.
Thank you for your information.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. The Council may now close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
No, I would just point out, once it's closed, it's just discussion at that point, because, you know, to reopen it means, and that means taking testimony from anybody, including the applicant. You get into, okay, we have to let other people maybe respond to that, and so, that's the basis. Just throw that out there, because you don't do this that often. When you close that hearing, it really is sort of now, it's up to the Council and in the Council's hands.
And then, are we still able to ask questions of you?
Yes, staff and myself is fine, but applicant, audience members can't.
Well, I'd like to make that motion that we close the...
For public hearing?
For public hearing.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second. Go ahead.
Counselor, raise your VHS.
Okay. Do we have to?
You can just have a voice vote. I mean, you don't need to do a roll call.
Okay, yes. All right. Okay.
No, 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 we need, no, we have to have a vote.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have to have a vote.
All those favor of closing?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Any opposed?
Any? No, I don't think so.
Yes, it was unanimous.
Okay. Unanimous, we close the hearing. All right. Further discussion? Or do we want to move on to the decision?
Yeah, we'll have some discussion, I think. So, I looked through this as well, and as much of the stuff that came in the Internet as I could. A lot of the issues that you folks brought up are issues that, as the City Council, I don't believe we can deny on. So, parking was an issue that was brought up. What I understand is, as long as there, as long as the applicant is meeting code, we cannot deny. So, I just want you to be really aware that a lot of the things, the parking, crime, property values, those are not issues that we can decide on and make a determination on. Correct?
Correct. You're limited in this context to what the code criteria are, and I'm not aware of any that deal with, you know, the effect on neighboring property values. Not to say it's not a good idea, not to say it should or shouldn't be in the code, it's just simply not.
And then, I guess the backside of that is, if we were to use some of those issues that you brought up, then that opens the city up for further legal issues. So, that's where I have a lot of problems, I think, with a lot of the issues that got brought up, where they are issues, yes. Are they issues that have standing further down the line? I don't believe they do. So, just, I, and the, I do live in the Webster Ridge Apartments, and I have walked that backside, and I thought, oh, you know, those folks there that now have a three-story apartment building in their backyards, I feel terrible for them. I really do. But it was property that was developable, developable, as commercial property. And that's, I mean, that's the downside to when you buy a beautiful house that has a nature area in your backyard that someday, somebody may sell. So, yeah, so that's all I have right now. I do like that, and I looked at the wetlands issue, and I think that by the, Mr. Cutter having the, saying that he is willing to step up and do the testing, that alleviates a lot of my concern with the wetlands, because as you have all said, we don't know, so let's do it, do the study. I heard him say, propose that he would pay for that, so that at least we can find out if there is wetlands there or not. It's an area of contention. You look at one map, it says no, you look at the map, it says yes. You walk down there, and I saw the same couple of thrushes or whatever when I got, I was past the property line looking at the Google map, but there were those, what I would have assumed were wetland thrushes when I was walking down there. So, there's an issue there that really needs to be looked at, and by him looking for that, I'm pleased with that, at least. And that's what I have for right now.
Counselor, may I ask a clarifying question in regards to our options? David, Early, you had mentioned that the wetland delineation could be a condition of approval.
Well, again, there's sort of two different wetland issues here. From a state regulatory point of view, yes, that could be a condition of approval.
Could it also be a basis for an incomplete application and denial?
Under the city's code, again, so, there's whatever laws and regulations the state enforces with respect to wetlands that are not our criteria, we would say, hey, condition of approval, go and get those permits through the state and tell us you got them, and that's the condition. But based on DSL's testimony, I think it does implicate your code, a criteria that you have responsibility for enforcing. And so, I think the basis for Jackie's question is, must you condition it? I don't think you do. In fact, the way I read 5B of this section of 1727, I'm sorry, 17, what did I say?
Yep, 1727, 05B.
Is, 5B, the provisions of this chapter shall be applied to that development review. And then, in 27030, on the administration, applications for subdivisions, partitions, planned unit developments, conditional uses, et cetera, and design review shall demonstrate compliance with this chapter as part of the review proceedings for those developments. So, you know, I'm not sure it can be conditioned, to be candid with you. I mean, it seems to say that once there's evidence that a property has that characteristic, it has to be applied during the review. I think the option, and that's sort of what I broached earlier, was you could, I think the applicant could put it and say, "Okay, I want to sort of have a timeout here, go through that review." I heard the applicant to say he didn't want to have that approach, he would prefer a condition of approval. I just don't know if that's possible. The way I read your code, I don't think it is.
So, that was my other question, then, is that lead to an incomplete application for denial?
I think it leads to, it's not so much incomplete as it is, and I think in retrospect, yes, it's incomplete based on, it's basically a standard that doesn't look like it's been satisfied and can't be through a condition of approval. That's my read of it.
David, just so, I'm going to try to paraphrase what he said. And the Planning Commission struggled with this. The Planning Commission did not have comments from DSL to work with, however. We have those now. It's legal counsel's estimation that that activates 17.27. 17.27 has an application process involved with it. And I think what David is saying is that because of new information that's come into the file, 17.27 must be applied, which requires a separate, different application. It doesn't so much make this one incomplete, at least not in my mind, but it makes this one unapprovable.
That's right.
Until 17.27 is satisfied through a separate application.
I disagree. I mean, not about, what, I agree that this needs to be denied, but I disagree that it's not complete, or that it's complete. I mean, there's no color, there's no diagrams, there's no...
Oh, okay, yeah, I was specifically the wetlands. I will say that...
Right, I know, you're talking about the wetland. I'm talking about the application itself.
Right, and this was discussed through the application process. I would say that this is minimally complete, and this was discussed with the applicant throughout, including at pre-app stage. It just barely made it in a couple of places. On the other hand, you get the fancy, you know, consultant ones, like 24-hour fitness, where they spend a half a million dollars on consultants, and you get a lot of information, and it's like uber-complete, and you still end up with that.
Well, no, I understand.
But, yeah, but I would agree that there, that that could be questioned. Is the design review application even complete?
Right. Well, in my 23 years on the Planning Commission, we've had applications that were done on, you know, in a kitchen table with drawings that were beautiful, that covered everything. And so, but I'm not talking about how it looks, or, you know, I'm talking about the type of information that was offered, you know, asking about the studio apartments. He hasn't even, he doesn't... He hasn't even, he doesn't know what they're gonna look like.
Well, and remember...
So how am I supposed to approve a design review? I'm not talking about the wetlands, I'm not talking about, you know, the multifamily or the traffic or anything like that. I'm just talking about the meat and potatoes of what we're supposed to be doing tonight, the design review. There's nothing to review because we didn't get it.
And I understand your statement, but I would point out that you got this big package, you got everything.
Oh, yeah.
And like, and like happens with a lot of, a lot of projects that go before the planning commissions, they do morph and change through that process, and this one did. And you got every plot plan, like from what it started out to what it ended up as, and they're all different.
To Mr. Cutting's credit, too, a lot of that was done out of trying to respond to...
Right, there was a lot of compromise, yeah.
I'm not, I mean, it was very confusing.
Yes.
As I mentioned earlier, when we were chatting, as to, you know, which plan was being forwarded, but even, even there, it still isn't all there.
It's weak.
So, yeah, I'll just leave it at that right now. So, Michael's asking.
Mr. Michael.
Now, Ms. Burdette did some good research, and I don't expect her to have been, you know, exhaustive on this, and Clay, I don't expect you to have a, you know, photographic memory of everything, but the implication is that this section, 17.27, as relate to wetlands, this may be one of the first times that it was significantly applicable, even in considering application with the city, and that may be why, you know, it took some additional information coming to us in the last few days for us to see that it does apply more than we thought it did at the planning commission stage. Is that, is that accurate? Can you recall a development where we were close enough to a wetlands that the requirement for delineation was made a condition of approval of anything we've done in the city?
Well, Title III applies to wet places, not just, not just wetlands. It applies along rivers, streams, just a variety of things. And the most recent application of 17.27 was for the 24 Hour Fitness and the Walgreen site itself, you know, adjacent to the west. We applied it there. That was not a, that was not a static wetland. That in fact was, was the river. We also applied it for the Reinerson work that they're doing there on the Lower Reinerson to mitigation for Portland Harbor to increase salmon habitat. They're trying to get salmon back up Reinerson, which is kind of cool, getting rid of the dam and everything. We applied it there, specifically to wetlands. This is not the first time the city has applied it. However, Title III itself and Title 13, I don't know if you've ever sat down to read the language in there, but it's very difficult, and you're a lawyer and you read this stuff, it's just very difficult to follow, and it's because they're trying to account for every possible scenario in this massive metro area, and because of that, you get a bunch of jumbled-up language that is really hard to use, and if you get individuals who are not conversant in it, they start cherry picking stuff that makes sense, you know, in isolation, but it's not alone, it's all connected to everything else. It is really hard to use. But I guess in short answer, no, this isn't the first time we've done it. I guess if that was your, if that was your question, sorry.
Adam, Chair. So David, I have a question for you. We were talking a moment ago about conditions. I think Mr. Cutting offered the condition of delineation and having a wetlands consultant come onto the property, but I also noticed that the planning commission did include those conditions in the approval, so it's approved with conditions. And so what I wanted to do is make sure we're separating the two pieces here. Planning commission approved with those conditions, they're not necessarily exactly detailed, going back to...
Just to be clear, that's the, that's the condition, that's the former I was talking about. There may be state criteria out there that need to be complied with, comply with it. What I'm talking about now is the 1727.
Right, but I just wanted to clarify that we're not offering up conditions for a yes vote on, or a yes vote to support the approval from the planning commission, correct?
Can you, can you say that again? I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Okay. So the planning commission comes, the report comes to us...
The decision.
Decision, comes to us, approved, approved with conditions, right? And there's two conditions are in there. But we begin speaking tonight, we kind of spun off and started talking about, well, I will do these things. Well, those, those things are already included in the approval, in the decision, correct?
Not really, no.
Okay.
No, because that's the thing, what the condition regarding wetlands in the, in the planning commission's approval is to say DSL may have criteria that it would impose on you, state criteria relative to this wetland.
Okay.
We need to see proof that you've complied with that.
Right.
Prior to you developing this property. That's, that's what's in the planning commission's decision.
Correct.
And what we're talking about tonight, based on that DSL letter that came after the decision, is compliance with your criteria.
So I'm looking for that bright, that clear bright line between the two, because I think that's, that's kind of confusing when, when a condition is put into the decision, and then yet we're gonna ask for another condition, basically. Or it was offered up, I'm not saying that we're asking.
Right, it was, I think what the, I think what the applicant's proposal was, is to say, approve it, but then condition me to comply with 1727, whatever that takes.
And then...
Not, not a DSL regulation necessarily, but your regulation.
Okay. And then, and then whatever comes of that will be outside of our jurisdictional control to a certain degree, correct?
Well, could, could undo the entire approval, it could be fine, you don't know, but that was, that was my point, is that I'm not sure you can, because it seems pretty clearly to me to suggest that if evidence comes up during the review that says, oh, wait a minute, 1727 is applicable, you've got to go through and do that, not approve it and then say, oh, yeah, we can just condition that in the back. That's the way I interpret the code.
I was just trying to track it.
Oh, yeah, 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 no, I know, it'll make your head spin, I know.
Okay.
So is 17.27 applicable? So I guess that's the question I have.
Right, well, that's a decision for you to make in terms of your code, but it seems to me, based on DSL's letter, they say, there may be, the criteria says, if evidence is submitted, the DSL letter, suggesting that a property may contain a water quality resource area, i.e. the wetland, the provisions of this chapter, 1727, shall be applied to that review. So that's where I think, yes, I think it is.
What does that do for timelines and stuff, with that showing up yesterday, and 120 days, 100 days gone?
I think you're, you're sort of at the position now where it's either, based on that, if you agree with me, that it seems to fit into, that 1727 is applicable, it's either denied, at this point, it's denied, absent a break in the 120-day clock to allow that to happen, which I didn't get from Mr. Cutting, which is interest, so.
Can we ask him if that is of interest, or is that just something we move forward on?
The hearing's closed at this point, so...
Okay.
I'll throw a motion out, that I move that we deny the application. Oh, you're not ready? Oh, okay.
There was one other testimony that bothered me, and Counselor Neese, let me do that again. Abernathy Court, my understanding is, be our ulterior route to get in and out of there. Is that correct?
No, that is the main route.
Huh?
That's the only, only route.
The only route.
Right.
Okay. I was really glad I wasn't in my truck when I went down Abernathy Court, because it's a narrow street, and there's, there's not too much of a set back to, back to the houses.
Correct.
So if there's any congestion in that area, that'll really make that neighborhood hell, in my opinion. So I guess the summary of that is, I believe, a concern, a traffic study, whatever should be done in that area. We talked about a 1.5 car parking allowance for 50 places. I would suspect it'll come closer to two per property, and 100 cars, even if it's only 75, is quite a load on that little street.
So just to, you know, make sure that we're, for the record, talking about, you know, what the criteria are, I would absolutely be willing to toll otherwise, but my understanding, and certainly this was something that was discussed at the planning commission, my recollection of looking through the code, is that there's nothing, the code says what it says about parking. We may think it's the wrong ratio, we may think it should be different, but the code says what it says. You might be absolutely right, Counselor Mercer, it might be an absolutely friggin' disaster out there, but the code says what it says. And I know that's very frustrating for people that live their lives. It shouldn't be just, well, you know, let's use some common sense. We don't get that luxury in this context, you know? You have a code, and that's the whole purpose, is to set out standards that people know they have to meet. So you don't get into subjective decision-making. I mean, that's really what it boils down to. That's the law's sort of overarching goal, is to say, we don't want it to come down to people playing favorites or having any, it's just, what does the number say? So that might be something that we'd want to look at in the future and change, but I think what we have now is what we've got, and I think the same thing with respect to traffic studies. I mean, there's nothing really in the code, certainly for a development of this, from a traffic point of view, rather modest increase, that would trigger a requirement for a traffic study. Maybe it should, and that's probably something that the code should, if you think it should, the code should speak to, but it doesn't.
And you're exactly right, but the sad thing is, I mean, we do have to look at our codes, and I try to put myself in the position of living on that street, the same as these other people have. And personally, I would not want to have to deal with that. And I, even though, you know, it's subjective here, but it's too difficult. And I got out and walked, I parked my car on their street, and I walked Abernathy, and I looked at across the street for additional parking and where people are gonna go, and the noise factor, and I mean, I took all of that into consideration. And I feel, my heart goes out to those people that live on Abernathy Court, that's how I feel about it, but I think we need to definitely work on our code situation and our traffic study definitely, because I tried to make a left-hand turn on there, and traffic was pretty heavy the day that I was there.
Well, with that, I'd like to make a motion that we deny application Z0236-17-D, overturning the planning commission's decision and upholding the appeal.
And just to make it clear, the basis for it would be the compliance of 1727? We had to write an order that...
Yes, and, well, I've got, you know, several others, but, you know, regarding the architectural plans, grading plans, you know, there's still some things missing, in my opinion.
So this would be lacking submittal requirements or incomplete submittal requirements?
Complete.
That would be my, plus what?
So I would ask you, Counselor, maybe to restate it with just the one issue. I think that will make it easier for us to vote yea or nay.
Sure, okay. So I move that we deny application Z0236-17-D, overturning the planning commission's decision and upholding the appeal according to 17.27.
You could just say non-conformance of 1727.
Yes.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Cool.
Well, we can discuss some more.
Okay, go ahead, Michael.
Well, I guess my question is, you're speaking of denying it on the basis of one specific criteria. Depending on the vote, the results of that vote, would it be possible, for example, if that vote were defeated, to take an additional vote to either approve or deny based on other criteria? Are we gonna limit ourselves to this one issue to, in terms of the final decision we make tonight?
No, you're, that's absolutely right. I mean, it's obviously, if this motion were to succeed, then there's, the issue is over, it's been called, questioned, and you're done. But if it failed, then any, we still have a decision to make, so another motion can be made, either for approval or denial, condition, et cetera, you're right.
I think it's important to say, I've not had a lot of experience dealing with land use disputes of this kind, but I have been impressed by the conciliatory attitude of all the parties involved. Just the story that Mr. Cutter shared about driving around with Mr. Early says to me that both sides of this issue, and I know some of you are gonna go away disappointed, and some of you are gonna go away happy tonight, probably, both sides were willing to work together to try to find solutions. The thing that stuck out at me the most when I started reading all this testimony was Mr. Cutter's needing to meet minimum density standards. For a lot of us, we talked about not-in-my-backyard attitudes, the tone of that is a sense that somehow density is bad, more density is bad, and for the city to apply a standard that you, to say to a developer, sorry, your property needs to be even more dense, is sort of counterintuitive to that attitude. I have appreciated the way you've described the argument, Mr. Early. I think perhaps we should put a church pastor in charge of all of the groups that are trying to do, because I think, this has been absent a lot of the kind of attacking, every now and then, I, you know, I would see the phrase greedy developer, and I just ignored it, because here's an example of a creative developer, an accommodating developer, one who has attempted to provide something that would serve the needs of the community and serve the needs of the property in which he has invested. There's a concept in housing land use that's commonly referred to as the missing middle of housing styles. It's that those kinds of home developments that fall somewhere in between single-family homes on the one hand, and very large dense property, apartment developments on the other hand, and it's something that not all city codes provide a place for. This property seems to be a place where we have a developer who, who very honestly said he wished there was a different kind of design, something in between a single-family home and a dense apartment that could go in there. And what I don't understand is, is if we have the option as a city to create a zoning category, a specified zone to attach to a specific piece of property that would enable these kinds of missing middle structures to be developed in our city. The triplexes and fourplexes, and as you described, Mr. Cutter, the small village-type units around a central courtyard. It's the kind of thing that I would have liked to have seen on that property up on Glen Echo when we were considering that last year. Something that was a little more creative, provided some options for people, something that gave somebody not more of the same thing, but something kind of new. I'm not gonna weigh in at this point how I feel about voting on this, but I feel it's important to say that, you know, I was handed this 270-page document the first full day of my term of office as a city councillor, and I spent three hours reading it. I want to suggest that I may have read it a little more thoroughly than Counselor Reisner, because I did see answers to several of the questions you've raised in there, so I'm not willing to condemn the application on some of the same grounds you did. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, it was a pleasure to read it. I learned so much from the letters and the research that Brenda Burdette did. I know that there are several of us in the community for whom this is almost literally a not, or an in-my-backyard project. The home I own, the home Counselor Steve Johnson owns, the homes owned by several of the people who spoke tonight, you can look over your back fence from those homes and see either the subject property or the wetlands. And I'm glad that it's not just about, I referenced earlier, the one comment I made when I attended a neighborhood meeting, and I, my advice was, if you're gonna get the community engaged in a discussion of whether something is good or bad, don't start by making generalizations about rental properties and renters themselves. You know, that they make too much noise, or they park their car in the, in the grass or, or something else. You know, it shouldn't be about that. Our city comprehensive plan actually speaks and recognizes that there are different kinds of needs for different kinds of homes, and I'm glad that we didn't fall down to that level in doing this discussion. So I just want to say thank you to everybody for your participation in... So, um, I just wanna say thank you to everybody for your participation in this process. I'd like to know, perhaps, from, uh, the city attorney, what option, if any, does the city have? The developer indicated it's not his responsibility to change the zoning, uh, that would be the city's responsibility. What options do we have in that regard? Let me know whether we have another option than what we're talking about.
I think you always have an option. Um, I think the question is how likely is that option, you know, to succeed? It is a, when you're, when you're talking about, and again, I'm just gonna speak in terms of, of, of what I understand and what I know of Gladstone's zoning code and housing stock relative to other metro jurisdictions. Um, you know, you're, you're fairly light when it comes to, I think, notwithstanding some of the comments before about metro and not really having a minimum density requirement. You know, they really look for, for jurisdictions within the metro area to have at least, you know, 25% multifamily, uh, the potential for, for, for 25% multifamily zoning. And so, it's, it's, it's a matter of what the, what, I, I think it'd be a great thing, though, to at least reach out and have that discussion, there's absolutely nothing preventing that from happening, and maybe there is something that, as you say, I've never heard anybody describe it that way, and I think it's a really good way to describe it, you know, that, that, that middle, uh, that middle house, you know, that, that middle ground that, that sometimes gets overlooked. Uh, you know, metro is, is, I think, to its credit, willing to be sort of creative. Um, it's just, once you start changing the zoning on it, that will bring, from my lawyer's hat, that brings in, um, you know, shines a light, perhaps, on, perhaps, some of the deficiencies in Gladstone's mix, if you will, from metro's perspective, from the state's perspective. Um, but I wouldn't say that should discourage it, I mean, it, it, you know, you never know, something like that may really have some, 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 some legs, so. And I think that's the kinda thing that you'd only wanna do in concert with the, with a property owner. Um, something like that, you know, just, he's, Mr. Cutting is correct, the city sort of retains the, the authority to change the zoning on it, can do that on its own, can do that in response to a request from a property owner, but I think the only way to go about doing that, for it to be successful, is to do it together.
I wanna also thank, you know, the, the community, and also Mr. Cutter, uh, as mentioned, I read it, I, I had to smile when, you know, it was mentioned about, uh, the, the way you guys work together, and that you're gonna continue, I, I would assume, and my, my denial isn't because I want this project shut down, I just feel that more information was needed. I wanna thank the, the planning commission, I really value, uh, you guys, and also, uh, the parks board, uh, the library board, you know, all of our committees and, um, commissions that help advise us, you're very important, and I, uh, am not, uh, denying this, thinking that what decision you made was, was incorrect. Uh, as mentioned, we got more information, but also I think that, uh, more, more talk, maybe start over, get, get the, uh, delineation, sorry, I'm getting dry, done, maybe do some more research, or, you know, get together with, uh, um, architect or somebody to come up with some more plans and put together something that, um, is, you know, I'll say this, more complete, I guess, would be my, uh, is why I made the motion that I did.
David, where do we go from here?
You need to vote on the, on the, there's a motion, uh, second, so it's been discussed since then, so you, whether you do a voice vote or a roll call is up to you, Chair.
I have another question, Chair.
Okay.
So, uh, if he, if we deny it, and he does, so the next step for him would be a delineation study, potentially, and he does that, and there are no wetlands on his property, then he has to resubmit everything all over again, or does a clock start to where he just, okay, I, I have come to terms with 17, I wrote it down, 17020-5B? Does it then, is another 120 days, is the whole process all over again?
Well, he would have to reapply.
So, it is the whole process over again?
Yeah, but I think there'd be, you know, a lot of it, I mean, again, this is probably a matter of perspective and opinion, I don't, I don't think there's as much that he would need to do than I think some in the audience feel that he would need to do, however that would play out, it would be a reapplication, but I think a lot of it would be a matter of saying-
It's done and ready to go. Okay, thank you.
Do a, a roll call.
Okay, ask one more clarification question.
So, David, when you're saying he has to reapply, so my understanding of this process was that the decision, approval decision, if denied by us tonight at the public hearing, the next step would be appeal to Luba?
Certainly, he could do that.
Okay.
Another option he had would be to simply-
Okay.
So, my question is, are we, are we developing a condition here to allow him to come back based on the, now that we, now that we are feeling that 17.27.020 subsection 5A, or 5B, is the condition, uh, because I'm, I'm trying to find the track to whatever-
A denial wouldn't have a condition-
Okay.
A condition of approval.
Right, but it was just, I think, Counselor McMahon just suggested that there was a possibility of, of that, and you said it's a, it's a reapplication process, McMahon.
If I understood Counselor McMahon's question, it was more about what options are available to the developer now.
After the, okay, now, after, or after-
So, after, so if we deny-
Mm-hmm.
Based on that, his next step is either go to Luba, or-
Apply, including-
Or do, or do the study, right?
Including 1727, which requires-
Well, he meets the 1727, there is no, um, swamp water, um, and, uh, then he can just, he has to still reapply, so then it's 120 days-
Be a new application with a new, new deadline-
Okay.
Everything starts over.
But the issues, I think, would be largely the same.
Okay, thank you.
Other than the, the, um, I don't wanna say swamp water again. The, uh, I'm drawing a blank, sorry, throw the word out.
Wetland.
The wetlands, if the wetlands not there, then yes, okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
All right, Tammy, you wanna do a roll call, please? Counselor Milch?
Can we reread the motion?
Yes, please, 'cause I'm-
I wanna know what a yes means and what a no means.
Okay, so, I've moved that we deny the application Z-0236-17-D overturning the planning commission's decision and upholding the appeal, uh, on the basis of 17.27.
27.
020. 020, 5B.
The record'll reveal that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Noncompliance with that chapter, basically, that particular one.
Okay, Counselor Milch?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor McMahon?
Yes.
Counselor Mercer?
Yes.
Counselor Neese?
Yes.
Unless there are comments from the council, I think adjourn the meeting would be-
Okay, adjournment?
I move.
Go ahead.
I second.
All right. Been motioned and seconded, and meeting is adjourned.